Gentlemen, I'll call this special budget meeting to order at 7:04 PM for March 17, 2022. So the first item is the consideration on the town manager's proposed 2023 budget. So please, I may have a presentation.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to share my screen in one second here, and we will get started. Just get the presentation. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I am proud to present our proposed budget for the town of Talon for the town manager's proposed budget. This evening, I will be going over an overview of the various revenue sources, information regarding the grand list, as well as we will be going through the departments of the senior center, human services, recreation, the library, state trooper's office, as well as public works. We're all set for this sound, so. All those, I thought we were just going over three. Excuse me.
Yeah, it's like community services.
You broke them all down.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, because community services includes recreation, library, and human services, senior center. So let me just get right into my summary. The proposed manager's 2223 budget is showing projected revenue to be $60 million, 106,277. The general fund expenditure budget is $55,053.27, and that includes the operating expenses for the town and board of education. The board of education's portion is $42 million, $40,614, and the town government portion is $13 million, 109,713. Additionally, we have $4.7 million for our debt service, and our capital improvement funding portion of the general fund is $255,880. Incorporated into the revenue is use of fund balance, which is our trended fund balance that we've used several years ago, and that's the minimum that we've used. I was trying to get back to that number. We also are using $68,000 for the committed fund balance that we had set aside for debt from the debt service fund several years ago. The plan was to have the money start coming in this year to start offsetting the increases in the debt service going forward for the next couple of years. Oh, Mike was handling that. Thank you. We're good? Okay. The greatest thing about this budget is that our grand list grew 3.8%. That's the highest in almost 11 years, actually, that I've been here, but I've seen an increase that large in our grand list. With that, the majority of the increase had to do with motor vehicles because of the value of motor vehicles as well as the vehicles. That was a big part of our increase, and I'll be discussing motor vehicles. The proposed mill rate, other revenues, I also trended many of our other revenues. Looked at where we've been trending, where I see us going in the next year, and some of our other revenues also increased in this budget. With all that extra revenue that's coming into play, I was able to bring forward our proposed budget with a decrease in the mill rate of about .24 mills to 3687 from 3711. The board of education had adopted their budget back in February, and that number was $42 million, 95,614, which was a million, 276,325 increase, or 3.13% over their previous year budget. When reviewing the budget that the board of ed presented, I reduced it by 55,000 and brought it down to 2.99%. Here is. Okay, this here is the three-year revenue and expenditure comparison. It just kind of shows you where we actually ended up in 2021. Revenues of about 57.4 million, 57.4 million. We adopted a budget of 58.2, and for 2223 proposed, we had 60.1, which is almost a $1.9 million increase in the budget. Now, how this flows out is that the town operating budget is increasing $502,066, which is about 3.98% increase over the prior year. The board of ed, as I mentioned, is going up about 2.99%. The big increase in capital projects of almost $118,000 has to do with the general fund funding that we have to do, which I'll go through later on, and then our debt service, which was a planned increase for the debt service. What I've showed you here in the historical and proposed revenues just kind of shows you some of our non-tax revenues over the years and where we've gone up and gone down. As you can see, some of the trends here. Back in 1617, we're almost at $900,000 in state and federal grants, mostly all state grants. And as you could see, there were some years we went way down. There was a freeze that they put in in the middle of one year because of budget deficits at the state level, and the numbers have been kind of holding somewhat steady since that 1819 year. Investment income, we were low for a while, but then, again, we were up in 1920, and then 2021, and then COVID hit, and it's just falling right out. Hopefully, things will come to a change. Building permits, charges for services, it's just showing you the trends here. With education grants, I'll give you a little background. Over a few years back, the governor had proposed a phase-in to reallocate the education cost sharing grant amongst the different communities based on their formula calculation. Talon, unfortunately, was one of the towns that was supposed to have a significant reduction of a couple million dollars. And with that, the plan was to phase it in over 10 years at $330,000 reduction for each of those years. In the beginning, it started, we started seeing the reductions in here, and then in in the current year that we're in, 2122, the governor had proposed in his budget last year that he was going to hold it stable for the education cost sharing revenue. And we were advised from Connecticut, Providence municipalities, costs, some of our legislative officials, excuse me, that the amount was not likely to stay stable, and we were strongly advised not to budget that amount. So in 2122 budget, we did reduce it by the $330,000. Now, my understanding is that we are going to get to pull them up after the legislature met and all that. They did not reduce it. So any excess funds that we do receive, they will be doing adjustments after they get all their final reports in. Whatever excess there falls within our municipal stabilization fund, that's where those excess revenues will go. They'll go under the guidelines of how that fund works. And in this current year, again, the proposal is to hold it stable. So when I put the education cost sharing revenue into the budget, I held it at what the amount should be. Just show you some of our historical and proposed budget expenditure percentages. You'll see in some years. I'm sorry, we're not taking questions tonight. I see someone who's talking. Sorry. Just so I can mention this for the audience out there. This evening is a budget workshop for the town council to hear from each of the departments, and the same thing will be for tomorrow evening. On Monday evening, on our last budget workshop, we will have a public comment session at the end of the meeting for anybody who has questions. So please keep your questions that you have regarding anything to hold till Monday, or by all means, you could contact me at my office, or email me at lhandcock@talon.org, and I will try to respond to your questions.
I was just going to add, Lisa, we also have the public hearing for the budget on the 24th. It's another opportunity for residents to write in on the whole budget.
Okay, so it just kind of shows here our trends of the overall expense increases. Some years went down, very minimal. And this year, the overall expense increase for the town, the board, the debt, and the capital is about a 3.25% increase. Our grand list growth, as I had said, you could see we've had very minimal growth in our grand list as well as reductions during the evaluation year. So 3.8% with almost $49 million increase in the grand list is where we're at for this particular year. I'm showing the impact on the mill rates over the years. Some years, we've had no change. Some, we've had over two mills. All average right around 1.15% this year with the proposed excess revenues. We're reducing the mill rate by, so far, my budget, by .24. So as I stated, most of the state revenues are remaining status quo. You know, we never know what's going to happen after you adopt your budget. There certainly could be reductions mid-year. As we were told, there were some revenues that we see from municipal revenue sharing last year that we were supposed to get this year, and I've already been advised that we will not get it because there are insufficient excess sales tax where that's funded from. And we're being advised that we don't know if we will get it for next year or not. The projections that I'm being told right now are looking like we're not going to get that. So I did not include that in the budget. If it does come in, again, it'll go for the municipal tax stabilization fund, and we can try to incorporate it into the next budget to reduce the mill rate the best we can. I already talked about the ECS funding. So I'm not going to get into that any further. This just shows the revenues that the governor proposed. This is what we get from CCM each year. Basically, all this is in my current plan. I will discuss this motor vehicle, $1.2 million revenue. It is not included in my proposal, but I am discussing the impact of that as we go forward. Here we go. Right now, there is a motor vehicle tax cap. It's at 45 mills. The town has never hit the 45 mill, thank God. But there is a proposal by the governor to go down to 29 mills, and I know there was also an alternate proposal that I don't know where it's at just yet to possibly go to 30 mills. In either event, I use the worst-case scenario of the 29 mills. Historically, we haven't hit the 45, but in this particular situation for Talon, if it does go down to 29 mills, then the impact by adding in the proposed revenue from the governor and pulling the motor vehicles out at a 29-mill rate would bring the mill rate down to 37.04, which is still a reduction from where we're at now, but not much. The reason for that is because when the governor, his office did the calculation on the amount that Talon was supposed to get, which was below over $1.2 million, they based it on last year's grand list for motor vehicles. This year, we had a substantial increase in the grand list for motor vehicles. So there's definitely a gap there, and the gap that I calculated was about $312,000 shortfall, which I will just say it, which either, I don't know if the government, the state will be making an hole. The proposal I have right now is that $1.2 million. But that's what I had in mind.
Do you know if, when you were looking at this, did you also account for the removal of commercial vehicles? Because that's part of it. It's 29 mills, and it's also removing commercial vehicles from the car tax in total, and then moving it over to
To personal property.
Personal property, which is less stable for reporting purposes.
I did not do that.
So it could be a bigger gap if that doesn't include commercial, removing all commercial vehicles.
And when I checked with our assessor, there were, he had stated to me, because I talked to him about there was different values also going to be using a market list value for the vehicles when they're purchased rather than assessed value at 70% and all that. And he had advised me that that probably would not take effect next year, even if this went through. So I was under the assumption that that whole commercial vehicle thing was also next year. I could be wrong.
I would just double check.
But in any event, then that would also have another impact, and hopefully. But I just don't know, by the end of March, I don't know where the legislature would be with all these things. Hopefully, we'll know before your budget is adopted, and then we can make adjustments as you see. So with revenues other than other than tax dollars, we are about 200, I'm going to say 215,000. I know it shows 197,000. But part of that was that I pulled the telecommunications revenue out of the other revenue category and moved it up into our tax revenue category because that is a tax on telecommunications. It's just received in a different way. That's for certain cellular telephone companies, but there's only certain ones. Other ones we collect, but there's a couple that are statutory and collected by the state. So in additional revenues, I'm, well, I'm actually showing almost 400,000 by the time I'm done because here with the state aid for ECS, that's the biggest chunk right there. $330,000 was what I discussed earlier. Then there were some minor adjustments in some of the state grants where we were getting some extra money according to what the governor reported to us. License and permits and charges for services. We had an increase there. The big reduction is in interest income. And unless things change in the economy, we're not doing very well this year either. It's minimal. It's almost like we're paying to keep our money in the bank. And then, again, we had much higher use of municipal stabilization fund to use the total balance in that fund as well as fund balance last year. So by me reducing it down, it's $192,000 reduction. So the net effect is about 215,000, even though this is 197 because of that trend. One other thing, the importance, I just want to touch on fund balance just quickly. I know some people say, well, what does it matter if you have a AAA rating? Well, in Talon's situation, as long as we're issuing debt, a AAA rating means a lot. And to maintain and keep that rating can mean thousands of dollars in savings. A AAA rating sells better, our bonds will sell better in the market at a much lower interest rate. And with the amount of debt that we're issuing and hopefully cutting off in the future for this short-term timeframe, it's very important. So the reason that I tried to be careful of how much we use from fund balance is to try to preserve the value of our fund balance so that when we go to a rating agency, we will be going this summer to issue bonds in September. We want to be sure that we're trying to keep as strong as we possibly can. And then when we do use it, we really should be looking at using it in the budget for things that are more or less going to be a one-time expense, if we possibly can. If there's enough there to give or take a little bit, 200,000 usually isn't a bad impact. But we really should be very careful how you use it. So when I look at where we are with our unassigned fund balance, we do have, you know, over the years, we have increased, gone up, gone down. But I'm estimating next year, depending on what happens, that we'll probably go down to about 14.6%. Our policy requires between 10 and 17%. So we're within what fund balance policy states we should be. However, if we were to look at what the government finance officers association recommends, we should be at least one and a half months or so of operating expenditures, which is much higher than $9.6 million. So we're not really with that, but as far as the rating agencies are concerned, they're impressed with what we do have. This just kind of shows you in a graphic format. You can see the major reliance on our revenue sources is the blue, the tax revenue. The next larger source of revenue is our state and federal grants. You can see back in fiscal year 1213, it was up over here. And you can see it has been slowly going down. And then the rest is just our other charges for services. This, I already talked about what our expenditures are going to be. I already talked about the changes, the total of operations and town debt, capital, 3.4% spending increase. This just shows operational cost on a graphic flow from back from 2010. As you can see, this is the town operations, where it has gone up over the years or stayed fairly close in some instances, gone down a little bit. And the same thing for the board of education. Now, what makes up the total budget? Almost 70% of the budget, and that doesn't include debt that the town pays on behalf for the board of education. Just about 70% of the budget belongs to the board of education budget. A little over $42 million of this proposed document. The town is almost 22%, and then very small, less than a percent for capital. And our debt service is about 7.8% for debt service. So this is the larger scale total of where the tax dollars go. Now, breaking it down into departments and the operations, the different services that the town gets. Again, we have the board of education at almost 70%. That's the green here. Capital, very small portion in general fund attributed to capital. You start looking at your library operations, again, less than a percent. Same thing for planning, same thing for human services, 0.8%. Emergency services of the total budget is 3.8%. That would be your police, fire, ambulance protection. Town administrative services, that includes health insurance, the fringe benefit costs for the employees. It includes the insurance on property, the operations of the manager's office, as well as the different areas within central services for postage, things like that, IT expenses. Public works is about 7.7%. That includes your roads, your fields and maintenance and all that. And then 10%, this looks like a large number for finance and records, but that includes more than just the finance operations. That includes your registrar of voters. It includes your debt service, which is pretty much a big chunk of the budget, $4.7 million. It includes contingency for the payroll where we keep funds until we're ready to allocate the payings we just then come forward. So there's a lot of things in that budget that is not all just finance, as I know here. Now, if you look at just the town's share of the budget without board of education, of our $13 million, about 35.3% of that is for public works operations, that's your snow farm, your field maintenance, your road maintenance, things like that. You have public safety next at 17.4%. Finance and records, again, 7.9%. Contingency is broken out a little bit here by 2%, but this still includes the debt number here. General government, about 26%. Again, what I explained earlier, fringe benefits are for operations. Planning and community development, 3.4%, and then you have community services, almost 8%, and that includes your human services, your senior center, your recreation, your library. That's where your dollars go for the different services that you receive on the town side of things. Just a few highlights of the budget that I've put forward. Each year, we look at our utility costs. We trend it. We look at the kilowatts used. We try to make sure that we're staying up to date with what is happening. If there were any efficiencies put in place in changing lights or whatever, we try to catch those savings. This year, we were able to reduce the utilities budget by a little over $12,000. Our debt service is going up $50,000. It's mainly due to the birch grove as well as firehouse. I mean, so that's what we do, that's the firehouse as well. Our capital improvements went up almost $118,000 with funding from the general fund. This was a planned increase due to us having to phase in part of the burning sewer treatment plant expense that we are responsible to pay for. And eventually, that is going to stabilize over time where it'll fully be funded by the general fund. The big increases in my budget that have really made this higher than any budget we've seen in the past had to do with addition of four employees. Two of them are part-time. One of them is a brand-new position, and the other one is a reinstated position that had not been filled in prior years. The first one is the public safety officer, The first one is the public safety officer, which you were all, the council was all well aware of that. And whoever was in the public at the time when the safer grant was approved to apply for, this was the plan to factor it in each year. The safer grant, which is a grant that we'll get, hopefully get, it's been applied for a way to here. But if it does come to fruition, it will provide for three firefighters, public safety officers to start in, in July. If we don't get it, there will be definitely one officer starting, it was my plan before that grant, unless you don't approve it. So the plan was to phase that in. Now, what happens is if we get this, this grant, the eighty-four thousand dollars, that's portion that's set aside for that officer will be moved to the municipal stabilization, tax stabilization. That was all part of the plan for the, for the grant that we discussed. Unless there's a change in what you all would like to do. But I think that was the discussion of how we wanted to proceed with those funds, to set it aside and to phase it into the budget so that in year four, it would not be a major impact on the low rate to the citizens of the town. But again, what's going in here will be used to either offset one-time expenditures, capital needs, whatever, or phase in part of the salary in year four, whatever you decide to do. The next position is for a public works laborer. This position was in the budget a few years back. We had to reclassify, once we had the, the energy efficiency project put into place, we needed to have someone who could manage the systems and control all those operations. There was an employee who was promoted to that position. And then because of budget constraints, we held off hiring him. At this point, I, the public works director will also speak to it later. But I've put it back in because of the need. We've received several complaints from citizens. I don't know how many you may have received, but when it, when it's snowing out, people are complaining, you know, we're not getting the roads plowed fast enough. And, and you know, certainly COVID didn't help things. We had several employees out ill. We had some who were sick for other reasons. So a short staff doubling up on the routes, they just can't keep up with it. And they really need to have that position back. But I will let the public works director know for that later. There's also a senior center administrative assistant. This has to do with Kim's operation at the senior center. She's a one-woman show. And there's only so much she could do if she's out on vacation or if she's trying to manage certain programs. It's very difficult to be able to do what needs to be done with, with this department. The request came in, I think they were hoping for a full-time position. At this point, I, I could only support for now a part-time position until we could see where our budgets are going in the future. Same thing with recreation, a part-time recreation coordinator. It's again, another one-man operation over there with Bruce Watt, managing all the programs as well as trying to do all the administrative work, actually being at certain programs on nights and weekends. He, he needs help. We're hoping, we're, I'm phasing this one in at the last quarter of the twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. I'm hoping that COVID will start to be behind us. At that point, you can start gearing up summer programs and have someone help them and maybe raise even more revenue where we could self-support some of this stuff going forward. If we, if we bring it to a full-time position, we see if we could self-support it in that respect in the future. With our bulky waste, we're still doing what we've done in the current fiscal year. Trying to do at least one free bulky waste pickup. We're with Casella Waste Systems, which was romantic waste, they were sold out to Casella. And we've worked with them for, on a continuing contract. But the, the recycling market is very poor. Years ago, we received money for our recycling and now we have to pay for it. So with all that said and done, we're still trying to keep, at least for one more year, the services and for giving the free bulky waste, the one for year. And then looking forward at, you know, the increase in cost in recycling as well as everything else. It shows almost a thirty thousand dollar increase to the budget. Some of the big revenue drivers, which I've gone over some already, has to do with the salary increases, the big number here of two hundred and forty-three thousand includes the, the four new positions plus picking up the, the balance of what was due for the grants project manager. These are the associated fringe benefits that go with the salaries of the new positions, as well as the regular salaries of our employees for bike, medicare, those sort of things. The personal, personal contingency. We are going to be in union negotiations for two unions this year. So what we do is we do not budget any sort of wage increase within their budgets. We keep it in personnel contingency and you will see from years to years, it'll go up, it'll go down. This year, it includes the salary increases for the union negotiations and things that we spoke about in the session. Our fuel costs, they're going way up. And even after I proposed my budget, the rate that we locked in was higher than what we put in the budget. I'm hoping that we're going to make it next year. And if we don't, we're going to have to try to find savings in the budget because I have not brought forward an increase for that beyond the increases in there already. The professional services, I'll be speaking about later on when we get to their budget. But in the proposed budget, it was about a fifteen thousand dollar increase. It's actually going to be higher than that and we will talk about that when we get to the budget. World materials, service contracts, things like that, we had almost a thirty-two thousand dollar increase value. Adjustments that we had to make, is it a decrease, right? Okay, I'm sorry, yes. I'll try to show you some of the major increases, some of the major decreases. Certainly throughout the budget, we had ups and downs, but they weren't large enough to really point out. So with all this said and done, I'm looking at a proposed mill rate of thirty-six point eight seven, which is a point two four reduction. When you look at that, the impact on, I usually do residential and added commercial last year as well. If you look at the low, medium and high, it's, it's a thirty-one dollar increase for the low housing price of a market value of about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So we'd be thirty-one dollars less in taxes, forty-three dollars for the mid-level and seventy-five dollars for the high-level homes. Again, the commercial, we're looking at forty-six for the low, medium, eighty-three reduction and a hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the higher-end commercial businesses. And these are just the average, everybody is going to be different. If you look at a six-year average with the, the various mill rates and the increases and decreases that we've had over the years, it's about, over the six years, a hundred and ninety-three dollars average increase for the households in total for the six years. So now, I am, I'm sorry.
Sure, are we going to be asking questions?
Would you like to ask on this part of it first?
Yeah, maybe, if there's any portion, if there's any counselors have questions before you do the human services, yeah, I might just go through each section.
And if I can't get you the answer right away, I would certainly get it.
Do counsel hurry, and then are there any counselors that have questions, counsel Lucio, and that's a read-in, counselor, you're checked.
So I have a couple of questions about what's been presented so far, including some revenue details that were in the budget book. The first is about the board of that budget. So the board of education worked for a number of months to develop a budget that would, that they say meets the needs of their goals. I know, sitting in some of those meetings, they were very intense meetings to talk about having a budget that aligns with the goals of the town public school system. Your budget recommends less than that and I'm wondering why?
Funny reasons. First of all, I wanted to get it under three percent just to try to be somewhat reasonable in, in the percentage growth. But also I was aware, and I can't tell the board of education where they can cut or where they can add, I can just take from a grand total. And I was aware of some savings because the town found out this information after their budget was proposed that I knew would be able to reduce. Now, certainly it would have been, if I didn't cut it, if we up to the board, if they had that in their budget, that they could reuse it for something else, that's the prerogative. I felt that in all reasonableness, because I also cut the town as well. We were up close to five percent when I started with the town. I just felt, because I was aware of that and they felt everything else was covered, that I felt it was reasonable for me to reduce it by that.
So you're saying that there's money coming in that they didn't account for, so this isn't?
They were not aware, it's not that they, you know, they tried to hide anything or anything like that. They were just not aware of some savings in the OPEB contribution as part of it, and I'm trying to remember the source.
Are these areas where the board of it already projected savings?
No, no, the number they put in the budget was the number they thought it was going to be. And they had no reason to think it was going to be anything different until we finally got what we need to have.
So what, I, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. You're seeing the corresponding fifty-five thousand dollars or so.
It's not all, I, I honestly, I knew OPEB was part of it. And I'm not sure what else there was.
So you're seeing the, the board of it was requesting three point one three. You're seeing savings that the board will not have to spend to bring them down to this two point nine nine.
And when I originally started out my budget, to be honest with you, I was around a two point five percent where I wanted to be for the board of education. And trying to, to balance what they asked for, balance the needs of the community, trying not to let the mill rate go up, I, I was trying to balance everything. I felt that, all right, I could reasonably cut what I felt comfortable with. And then certainly if the town council on the board or the town side feels that you want a lower number, that's your prerogative to, to move forward with that representation that you're charged to do. But what I felt comfortable with, to have a reasonable impact on the citizens of the town by the, the services that I was being told the board of it felt this was their rock bottom, I felt comfortable with just cutting fifty-five thousand.
Okay, and there's so.
Where I was originally going to cut much more.
Okay, but there's fifty-five thousand dollars less that the board of expenses that will be charged to the board?
That is correct.
Okay.
I can't tell you exactly the, the rest of it. I know most of it is.
I just wanted to know the big picture, that there's.
They will find the fifty-five thousand dollars.
That's different.
The board of education has to remake whatever the final number is, say, you add back or you cut. They're going to have to meet and say, okay, where are we going to cut? Well, at least we know, you know, the money is one of them.
I'm sorry, I, I'm confused now.
I'm sorry.
I, what I'm, what I thought you said was that since the board presented their budget or voted on their budget, that due to, you know, numbers coming out from the state or other estimates.
It wasn't the state. It, it was money that I got from our actuary who does OPEB calculation.
Okay.
Some of that, fifty-five thousand.
But you, you're, you were telling us as counsel that there is fifty-five thousand dollars less that the board will have to pay for, that they had originally anticipated paying for?
No, I'm sorry for that, this misrepresentation. It's not, the whole fifty, fifty-five thousand is what I cut. A portion of that I can easily identify and I don't have the number off the top of my head right now. But a fair chunk of that I can easily identify. The rest of it, they are going to have to adjust their budget.
Okay, and so of the fifty-five thousand, at ballpark, are we talking about twenty thousand?
I think it was around fifteen, eighteen thousand, something like that.
Okay, so, so, okay. So you are recommending that, that we cut the board of education budget by whatever the difference is?
I'm, well, I'm recommending a cut of fifty-five thousand. You, you as a council as a whole can add that, you can cut it further.
Yes, I understand all that.
You can give them more money.
Sure, but that wasn't my question, yes, yes. My question to you is, was, why was there a reduction? And you're saying part of that is due to savings that were found that the board will no longer be charged. And there is also a, some amount of money that the board will just have to deal with.
Okay, so I'm sorry.
No, it's, I, thank you for letting me clarify. I, I will just say that that's a concern of mine. The board of education is nine members who were duly elected by the residents of college. And they did their job to come up with a budget. And it's troubling to me that that was disregarded or not, not accepted in your budget.
I, I certainly understand your concern there. I did not disregard their budget, please don't think that. I certainly tried to look at their budget and listen to the questions that many of you had during, when they presented their budget at that joint meeting. I, I tried to weigh that in as well. And, you know, without going line item by line item by line item in their budget, I felt.
Right, they went, my point is they went line item by line item by line item to their budget and their nine elected people. So that, that's my point. I have a question specifically on slide number nine, which talks about the motor vehicle cap. So what, what's the plan? What would be your recommendation for what to do if this passes and there is a, a gap in revenues?
Well, if this passes with the assumption that I have, it's all going to depend on when it passes. If we have it before you set the mill rate, you can.
It's not going to pass before, except the malaria.
No?
No, come on, no. It's going to pass the last week or the last day.
You know what, it, it all depends, I will have to do an analysis to see what the final impact is. See if they really reduce it to twenty-nine mils. If they don't, then, you know, if it's caused under this scenario of three hundred and thousand, three hundred and eleven thousand and we're at a thirty-six point eight seven mill rate, then I'm going to have to work at how I'm going to manage that. If there's going to be extra revenue coming in, that I may have to come forward to town council of allocating some of that extra revenue as to fill the shortfall in the tax revenue. It's certainly. It certainly requires an analysis of where we are with revenues. I may have to put a budget freeze in place for operational. Maybe would have to work together with the Board of Education to ask if there's anything they can do. I can't tell them, you know, the town council may have to discuss with them.
So if, if we, if we as a council vote to, to rec, to send a budget to referendum, and the legislature acts in a way that leaves the town with a shortfall, will you come to council with a recommendation on how to fiscally address that shortfall?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I would never just.
Sure, and so you say here, the, the second, the third bullet, it says the mill rate would need to be adjusted. What does that mean?
Okay, if this proposal were approved before you set the mill rate, then the impact based on this scenario would be that you'd have to approve it at 37.44 mils instead of 36.87.
There are other options, right? Like, that's not the only option.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's several, several different options.
Thank you. And so I have a couple of questions regarding revenues specifically. And I have them in my book, not necessarily on the slides. There's, I saw in the budget book, and I'm on page 82 if that's helpful, that the that things like prior years' levies, motor vehicle supplement, that's not on page 82. That's on page, yes, I'm sorry, page 82, I was looking at the wrong one. Prior years levy and motor vehicle supplement, that the department proposed budget is different than the town manager's proposed budget. And I'm wondering what's, what accounts for those differences?
There was, I'm just trying to find the.
Sure, it's at the bottom on the table.
Okay, bottom of page 82?
Yep.
Okay, are you talking about the 23 departments proposed versus the manager proposed?
Yes.
Okay, that has to do with, it's a plug figure so that we have a balanced budget. So the department proposed budget for total expenses between the Board of Education and town was about $61 million. What they, what they proposed to me, or what the education proposed to the Board of Education, the grand total was about $61 million. So between all the other revenues that were available, we had, the information that we had at the time, we didn't have the grand list finalized, all that, that the numbers there are what were proposed based on an estimated grand list that we were working with, as well as the impact of the higher expenses in the budget that were reduced through the budget process. So your revenues have to equal your expenses. So the revenues were much higher because the expenditures were much higher. So they go down. Now, in, in the manager proposed budget, now I have a, a much better grand list value because the assessor finished the grand list at the, you know, year. So you'll see, just for example, looking at motor vehicle supplemental, that went up $126,000 based on where I thought we're, you know, based on where I thought we were going to be and where we actually are. So that's just an example.
So are we're at an estimated 626,000?
Yes.
Okay.
That's estimated.
Okay.
You won't know until you get your stuff from that list.
Of course. Okay, so that makes sense. Thank you for explaining that to me.
Okay.
On page 84, there's some trending here on the contribution from fund balance. It's towards the bottom of the page.
Yes.
And so it has FY20 actual, FY21 actual, FY22 estimated. We recently looked at an audit which showed that we used a considerable amount of money from our fund balance in FY21. But that's not reflected here, and I'm just wondering why not?
Cool. For the actuals for '21, you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay, the, the way that works, you won't see it as a revenue item in here.
Okay.
Because when it's an actual, it'll be your total revenues less your total expenses. So if your expenses are higher than your revenues, then that's the amount you used from fund down. So I don't know.
We haven't used it in the last few years. I've put it in, but we've never used it.
We, we used it on a GAAP basis and
On GAAP basis, yes.
And you will see, there is a document within here, I think it's under Fund Summers, that shows you the impact on fund balance each year based on a budgetary and GAAP basis. The GAAP, which is generally accepted accounting principles, is the basis that all the reporting agencies and everybody goes by. There's things factored into there. Trying to find it. Page 112 just shows the fund balances and how they've opened out over the years. But, and of course, this is in such large print. Page 113, we, we really did our best to get this printed in, in a much larger font, but it's very challenging to get it.
I actually put that in my notes.
Yeah.
112, 113, 113, 114.
Yeah.
I can't even read these pages. I can't even read these pages like that.
You should have seen what it looked like before this.
This is the. I took pictures and was zooming in.
You don't have to do that. Just click online.
Oh, it wasn't online.
Or go online. Click on it, and I have the spreadsheet there. And you'll see it very large, very large in, in that. Those areas where I did have difficulty, I did try to, there's an option for me to put the spreadsheet into the, the online version where people could click on it and see it much clearer and much larger. But in any respect, if you're trying to look at trends in fund balance, this shows you if an amount was used on page 113.
I'll go back, I'll look at this figure, and if I can't find it, I'll reach out to you.
Yes, absolutely. But, you know, there's some years, some years, some years we had increases, like for example, last year it shows about, in 1920, I'm sorry, it showed about $1.2 million increase in fund balance. Well, that had to do with the major turn back between the town and the Board of Education due to the reasons that were shared at that time. But then again, a lot of those funds in the next year were reallocated back out. So even though it went in, it came back out
Right, yes.
when they were reallocated to like the 1% fund or COVID reserve fund, things like that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
So this may.
Yep, if I don't find it, I'll reach back out. Thank you.
Okay.
On page 84, then there's a line, I don't heard donations from sports organizations. It looks like that they're not going to continue. Am I reading that right?
We're having some, we haven't traditionally budgeted for that because it's never a known revenue for sure that we're going to get. So on the side of conservatism, I'd rather, it's such a, it's such a small amount, maybe $15,000 that I tend not to budget it, and then what we get actually does help with the fund balance or, or any offset of other revenues that we have a shortfall. The situation that we're having with those funds is that last year, the town manager gave a discount because of COVID, and they couldn't really use the tools, but they still paid. This year, we have at least one sports league that is not going to participate. So that would have been 5,000 shortfall right off the top. So luckily, I haven't touched it.
Thank you. Just two more questions about revenue. The governor's recommended budget includes a town aid grant
Yes.
as well as the, the loads of capital. Yes, thank you. I didn't, I, I saw that you had it in the presentation, but I didn't find it here.
You will find it in the capital section
Okay.
of the budget because that's where it's at.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mucio, followed by Agent Regan's, that was when you were checked.
And counsel.
Okay, counsel.
So I'm, I'm doing this, Katie did, I'm going up the budget, not necessarily your thing here. On page eight, you mentioned that, and I don't actually, you know, I don't know if it makes sense to talk about that in the, the section that it is rather than. You know, I'm gonna withhold that question until we get to the, that, I think that's probably the best way to go.
Okay.
On the sheet though, that you had here, it was on page nine and also in your, your, your breakdown of the major increases. FICA, et cetera, is on there, and I'm, I'm trying to reconcile the numbers that you have on that, that little document.
That one has changed also. I don't know, I sent a revision because there were some mistakes in that, in those numbers that were provided to me, so I had to redo the numbers.
Okay. This page here. So the salary increases add up to about this page. I don't know what number this is, it's not on here, but it's in the book too, so. It's page nine in our book.
That seemed to expenses.
So the salary increases are 123,473 plus 43,000 for the, no, I added what you have.
There you go. Look at that screen. It's different. The grand total is still the same, it's just the reposition number change.
All right, I used all the numbers that were in the book specifically?
It was wrong.
Okay, so.
I sent the revision out. I apologize for that.
So the, is the new salary, is that the what, 174, 116?
Yeah.
Well, that would be the 131 plus the 43.
This is just the base salaries.
Yeah, plus the 43.
Plus the 43 that we'll.
174.
Yeah, and then the rest is the other salary increases.
Okay, so the other 70,000 is that, and the FICA, FICA 7.65%. So what, because the 67,000 is, it's, it's the subsections of all of it.
It would be the impact of the FICA Medicare and those who did get pension. Not everybody gets the, and it's a deferred contribution plan, it's not really a defined benefit plan.
Right.
It's, it's the impact, the differential between what was in last year's budget and this year's based on, we have a, a huge spreadsheet that calculates everybody's salary that would include the fringe benefit costs based on the proposed salary for those individuals. So the increase with everything was 67,000. That includes part-time positions, your main positions, every, everybody with balance.
Okay. The, the $70,000 is in the salary increase, right? The, the balance is the increases in salaries?
The 243?
Right, so the 174 or 76 minus the 243 is about 70,000-ish for increases.
I can explain that. I know it sounds like, who's getting 70,000?
No, I know it's spread out.
No, 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 I need to explain this.
Okay, you explain it. I understand, but explain it to everybody else.
What happens each year when we do our budgets? And this may be something I propose in the future, depending on where we're at next year. This is not all the increase for this year. What happens is, we put funds in contingency, whether it's for non-affiliated or when there is a, a union that's in negotiations. Okay? Non-affiliated is always in there, and that's probably, I hate to, it could be about $50,000 or so for the non-affiliated staff. So what happens is, they weren't in that other, they were in the other budget, but now they're reflected in this budget this year, but it's really the current year's salary that we're in. I know it's confusing.
Say that again slower.
Okay. Let's say my salary. My salary goes into the 21, 22 budget that we're in currently as whatever I was paid last year. Okay? That does not include a raise if I were to get one in 21, 22. It only includes last year's salary. So what happens is, once the town council goes through and approves the wage increases for 21, 22 for non-affiliated staff, the monies get moved from a different account into the salary accounts. So it makes it look like salaries are going up $70,000 or so, but it's really the impact of moving money from another account to this account. And I probably should have clarified that. But do you understand what I'm saying? It, it's not really an increase in the budget overall. All right, the money was in a different account, and we reclassified it to salary accounts. So it made it look like salary accounts went up much higher from year to year. What I used to pull these numbers was I took, show me all the salary account budgets for 21, 22, as originally adopted, and I said, okay, show me the salary accounts for 22, 23, and I took the net difference between the two. And then I tried to figure out, okay, what were the major pieces of that? And I didn't even think about trying to talk about the 21, 22 raises as being part of that number. So I would say part of that would be for the unions that have settled, that would be the fire union would be in that number. I know we have two unions negotiating. So the difference would be the increase in the non-affiliated wages for the current fiscal year. So it's not really an increase, it's a moving from one account to another, plus the fire union wages that would increase the budget.
And then the, the balance of the 100,000 is the anticipated increases?
For union negotiations and things that we talked about.
Okay. All right. I think that's just hard for people to understand because it's showing an increase, and then you're showing another $100,000 contingency or increase on top of that.
You know what I do?
It looks like you're counting for raises twice and.
You're right. I'm going to try to clarify that. And because I honestly didn't even think about that when I was doing my comparisons. But certainly, it's not a total 233,000. What I can do is adjust out the raises, that number, to bring that number down, so the explanation.
Well, I think that would help from the year-over-year perspective too, because when you're looking at actuals and contingency, it's always significantly less than the 100-plus thousand dollars that's there. And that's because you're moving it.
Right.
But in what remains is the actuals, so it always looks like your trend is so much lower than what you're budgeting.
Right.
Targets my eye every single time.
Because I like to keep your eyes sharp.
I, I know, I know what it is. I just think you need to.
But no, I think you're right.
People need to understand.
And one of the things I would like to do, and certainly, I, I think it's going to be better for trending and such, but rather than putting the non-affiliated wage increases in in contingency, maybe we just start budgeting within the. in contingency, maybe we just start budgeting within the departments where they think. And then if it turns out that the numbers change a little bit, then we just move the little bits out rather than you know, I, I think that would be better, but the whole time I've been here, that's how they've done it. But doesn't mean it always has to be done the way it's always been done, and I think it's going to make it clearer, because it is very difficult for department heads. You'll see it on their pages, trying to explain the wage increase. Why? Because nobody really gets that sort of wage increase in one year. You good?
I'm good.
All right.
Okay. So one of the things that I'm struggling most with this, with the budget here is I'd like to, I'd like to get into the, the breakdown of the grand list increases, specifically I know how many, like I'm looking for the exact notes that I had here, okay. On page 46, it says that we had 20 residential units in 2021, but this page is saying we only increased by four. On 46, I'm sorry, on page 46, it says we had, we had 20 residential units in 2021 come on, and I know we had 21 homes with crumbling foundations that came back on our books. This one here is, page 49 is then saying four units, so I'm not sure which is correct on that. 46, 2022. 2021 and 2022 residential units, construction 20.
I think Jason does that, or tax assessor, he puts a lot of this together. So let me find out. Because there could be other things that are involved in that besides.
Okay.
You may not be comparing apples to apples, but I don't want to.
Okay, that's fine, and then on 49, because just on 49, the growth of 2021, 2022 is four.
46?
46 says 20, non, 20 residential units. And on 49, the net growth of 21 to 22 is four units. And it's saying that we had a growth in this page of single-family homes of 147 homes.
Which page are you on?
49.
Where do you see the?
Single-family column, 122, well, 5,022, 5,369. That's 147 home growth. I know we did not build 147 homes in town.
Let me find out.
Okay, I'm just saying, like, these two pages don't really tie out at all.
I will talk to Jason, it could, like I said, it could be different factors for different things.
Okay. That's perfect, so I'm struggling a little bit with the, with the net, the, the grand list growth. I understand the part of the, the new the new homes coming back on.
Yeah.
But our actual growth in the net grand list for homes is 0.5%. So I wanted to understand, what is the breakdown of how many of that, that net growth was new homes, and how much of that net growth was getting the 21 homes back on the full assessment for crumbling foundations?
Well, I know also, you know, these may be very good questions, certainly I can ask Jason. But he is going to be at your next meeting to discuss crumbling foundations.
Is he gonna be like, did you want us to ask him like the, the net grand list questions then? Because I know we don't have, like, when we talk to the assessor's office, it's about the assessor's office budget and not the.
Right, he's going to be at your next town council meeting regarding the ordinance 60. And he's also going to be discussing the crumbling foundations where we're at, an update. So if you want, if you wouldn't mind.
No, no.
Why don't you send me your explicit questions, that way I could have him here for the responses, so he'll have them ready available.
That's good, I can do that, I can send you questions.
That would really be helpful.
And then he can just answer them and discuss it after.
Yeah, I could either do that or have him send an email to me.
I would rather do it in public.
That's fine.
So my, my, my problem with the grand list is the major inflation, the major number that we're seeing the growth in right now is motor vehicles. And that's a temporary bubble. Kelly Bluebrook is already saying that they're seeing the cost of used cars down by 25% than what it was in December. And that's going to continue to go down, because it's a, it's an inflation artificial bubble. So my concern is we're banking 40-something million dollars of new revenue, the majority of it being car taxes, because the car's blue book value is artificially inflated. That bubble's gonna pop, and when that bubble pops, we're going to have increased our expenses by these large numbers, and we're going to have significantly less reduction. Like, I think of the total number of the, the motor vehicle increase, 147 were new vehicles. So I'd like to understand, what is the value of the 147 new vehicles compared to the inflated blue book value that we know is temporary?
We can ask that. I, when I did the five-year projection, which is also probably not as large as you'd like to see it, but certainly can forward up online. There are other I'm not really at liberty to discuss, but I'm sure many of you know. Other things, hopefully in our future with our grand list, that may sustain for a while some of this growth. But I really am not at liberty to discuss in detail, because it's not covered yet.
So that was.
I did include some assumptions in my calculation for the five-year projection.
Okay, because that was one of my questions, is in the revenue, you have an assumed growth of a million dollars in new construction in the, in the current year coming up. And I didn't know if that if that was a risk to put that in, if we knew for sure we were going to have a million dollars worth of construction that's going to hit our net grand list next year.
We are feeling pretty confident. Something loads up soon. Meeting very soon with developers on certain things, there's some other things going on. Again, I'm not at liberty to discuss it in public, I'm sorry. But there's other developments that are being considered and discussed. So hopefully some of that will also come to fruition. Those are not that good.
Okay. On page 34, the net taxes collected are at 32 million, 32 million from 46 million full year, is that, because it's just accounted through December? And do we have an update on that? 34, if you look at column 22. We went from almost 46 million in the revenues, tax collected.
That is just a partial, and there's usually a footnote here that says partial. I don't have our current tax collection number, but I know we're doing very well tax collections.
Well, January was the, so I guess I want to just know, when was that 32 million through?
That was the end of December.
Okay, so this does not account for the January receipts that were written on it? Okay. On page 46, I'm trying to understand what the assumption is behind it, we're going to have 20 new non-residential and 20 new residential units that are built and have COs in 2022. I didn't know if we, I didn't know that we had any non-residential construction going up.
Yeah. We had the down by Monet's table in office building.
But that would already be on our grand list, that's not like projected, this is, this is showing in 2022, the next calendar year that.
No, that's this year, that's the 21, 22 year, so fiscal year ended 22. On page 46, you're talking about? Yeah, that's 22. Is the is this fiscal year that we're currently in, it's not the next year.
Okay, so we had 20 new non-residential buildings being built?
We can ask Jason.
That was, Jason's going to be my friend.
Well, that, that is from his grand list system, where he's, you know, he prepared the grand list. He files, prints, gets the reports from the system, and it gives you the values.
Okay. So page 65. Page 65. The budget raises the property taxes by 3.51. This budget would raise the property taxes by the 3.51, which is hidden by the increase in revenues, mainly from the motor vehicle perspective. Charges for current services.
It's by the, the increase in the grand list only, yes.
Yeah. Charges for the current services are increasing 17%. And that's the permitting and all the other stuff, correct? We have permits and.
Mainly mainly due for property conveyance taxes, and it's the other one that town court likes. But there's two major sources, recording fees, thank you. The, those two in that category, we've seen some substantial revenue just with all the property transfers and everything else happening. Over the past few years, I trended it, and I felt comfortable to be increasing those revenues to where I'd brought them.
Okay, are permits fees in there also?
Permits. No, permits are under license permits and fees. See if building permits is in your charges though. Page 83 has a lot of the detail. License permits and fees are under building permits. Now, building permits are under license permits and fees. That category went up 30,000.
Yes, okay, so recently, I was told by a local developer that, that they were paying $12,000 for permits for a project that they were looking at, when every surrounding town from us that they have, they built in, they were paying no more than $1,200 for the same exact permits.
I remember that.
So 1,200 to 12,000, this has an assumption of growth here of 30,000, almost.
I think the permit that, it's the same developer I'm thinking of was talking about planning and zoning fees.
Yes.
That's different from building permit fees.
Okay, so which one is that in?
And, and just so you're aware, I've asked for a study to be done on that comparatively to other communities, to try to look at those fees. And maybe coming forth with a proposal to the town council once it's all reviewed, just to give you a heads up on that. The multi-unit fees for that planning, oh, you asked where it was, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Which one is it in?
I think it's the zoning permit fees that only went up like 800 dollars. Because we received some fees this year already.
So. You're on which page are you on?
Oh, 83, under license permits and fees, it's zoning permits.
83. 83.
And then there's the planning and zoning fees, which is a different one. And certainly David, when he comes in, can clarify between the two, but there's different inland weapons fees that have to be paid for their permitting process, so that's a different type of fee under charges for services, that's $5,000.
That's the pistol permits? Pistol permits are 5,000, right?
That's, that's up under permits and fees. Zoning permits is right under building inspection.
Yeah.
Building permit.
That's at 9,000.
That's 9,000. Then there's also, if you go down under charges for services, there's other planning and zoning fees that are out there, that's one.
So they're just kind of broken up all over. So I guess my point here is, if, if we have any kind of availability, I would like to know what we can do to lower the fees so we can get more businesses in town.
We're looking at it.
Okay.
I'm on top of it.
Okay.
That conversation, I think I had the same conversation with that, with A. P. D. Dev. I'm not sure if it's the same one, but I did have a conversation with A. P. D. Dev. around the same topic.
So the my concern here also is with the usage of the fund. I don't think if we have additional revenues, we should use the fund at all to fund, like, anything. We should use the revenues, because I don't, if, if we have an influx.
Are you talking about the fund balance?
Fund balance, yeah, the $200,000. Like, that, to me, I think if, if we have the money coming in, it doesn't make sense to still take out of our our balancing account if we've got more revenues.
Well, I mean, that's certainly a council decision as to where you want to go with that. It would, it would raise, the money you would have to raise is through cash dollars, there would nowhere you'd go higher based on how much we pull out of fund balance.
Page 72, I have temporary help is going down. 70, page 72. No, I'm sorry, why is temporary help going up? It's not going down, it's going up. Page 72, I'm on page 72, right here. Why is temporary help going up? We're hiring for new heads, but we're going to be paying 73 from 68, we're going up in 10.
That was based on one unit, and I need to look at the percentage, but the percentage should have been where we were trending for them cases. Let me look at it.
Yeah.
I think the temporary help actually fell under the registrar's board, which would be a different night for the discussion.
Oh, yes.
Because it's a different budget year than with the probably up an increase versus 2021's odd year, I think it shifts between even and odd year elections that when it's primaries and other election, we have a higher use of temporary help for election staff. At least it's what I was looking at ahead of time for tomorrow, but that's more of an expenditure, not a revenue question, I think.
Well, I could look at this, I know it's a massive spreadsheet, and that's another thing I want to look at, it's doing this differently, because doing this took like two or three days. The data is not easily downloadable into the format that I have here. So what I'd like to do is maybe change it for the next year. Because it was extremely time-consuming and inefficient process, but still get what you need for your trending. So I'll look at that again.
I had a question regarding the open choice grant dollars. For some reason, those don't come into the town budget like the ECS. And I was wondering if you could explain why. It's a grant from the state, and I believe most other towns that I know of that have it, it goes in as an offset to revenue, but it's not shown on our side, it's not shown on anybody's side actually. Well, it's, it's mentioned, but it doesn't show like how it how it balances out in the budget, that was one of my questions in the joint meeting.
That is on the Board of Education side, it's a special grant, and it's recorded and managed through the Special Educational Grants Fund. The detail for that particular grant and the expenditures associated are run through that fund, and the Board of Education has the revenue and expense reported on their side. So I can't tell you exactly what they're spending it on, but there is a, it's a separate fund on their side that shows the money coming in and the money going out.
Okay, and the last question I have before we get into all of the separate areas is can you give people a high-level understanding of what is in the assigned fund balance, not the undersigned? Page one-twelve, if that helps.
Okay, a majority of assigned fund balance, and I don't have our annual financial report because that breaks it out in more detail, um, in this, in the footnotes each year, but a majority of that would be, money that's set aside to be used for fund balance in the next budget. So if, um, if we had five hundred thousand or two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, that's, that part of that number is included in the assigned. The other portion has to do with, um, encumbrances that were in place at the end of the year, that's another piece of it. The things that were ordered and received after June thirtieth, but they were ordered before then, or the bills didn't come in, well, the bills today come in, but it was received before June thirtieth, so I can't say I won't forget that. But that includes year-end encumbrances for both the Board of Education and the town, um, orders that were in place at the end of the year. Those are the two off at the top of my head that are the major numbers within there.
Okay.
Thank you, that's what we need to, which you're regaining, called by Chris computer check and then counselor.
Thank you, Sheriff, I'd like to get back into the grant list if we could.
Sure.
Uh, we talked, talked a little bit about it, um, and a couple of things that we know is through three point eight percent. And that's the highest it's grown in about ten years or so.
At least, yeah.
At least ten years, okay. Uh, and then on the, uh, you know, budget book, um, a lot of years it, it grows less than one percent, so, right? Okay, so this isn't a trend we can really expect to continue, right?
Um.
And there are certain things you can't really talk about right now, but we set that aside.
If you took out the motor vehicles and everything state status quo, then I'd say we'd be close to, you know, under one percent per year just based on residential, if we didn't have other things happening in our town. There certainly are a lot of, um, there's some houses going in, uh, new development off of, uh, Old Post Road here, up the hill, there's quite a few houses that went in there. There's some other areas, uh, being developed. I'm trying to remember, I was riding all around the town a couple of weeks ago.
I think like that hill, like up the old step.
Yeah.
Like Elridge.
There's, there's quite a few homes going in there that will eventually come out to the grant list. So there, there is some development going on in this town, if we get, if they'll move in, that would be great.
Reason I ask that is, um, it's kind of a spur of the year for the grant list. So I'm kind of looking at this, almost like a windfall for the town.
It is.
And it is, okay, so I'm also looking at the, the biggest ask and the biggest increase for the town budget uh, out of the six previous years that we listed here. Same thing for BOA. So it, to me, it's kind of correlating with, with the, the growth in the grants, which is awesome. But I think what we really haven't talked about is the impact that all this could have on the residents in town if we go lower. So if we go lower, we can help somebody fill their oil tank. If we fill their oil tank this year, it's outrageous, our gas tanks, everybody, I don't have to go through the list of, of expenses that we're dealing with right now. So I'm just saying, I might have to tell you what to cut, I'm just saying, I'm supporting a lower budget just due to the fact that I think this is a one-time windfall that we got for the town. And I, I don't think we can expect this to continue. So, and, and the second benefit we'll have is we're all gonna be here next year in theory because there's no town council election. So when we're sitting here a year from now, uh, the bar will be lower and we'll have an easier budget to deal with next year. I think so, so I think there's two benefits to that.
Sure, now remember, and certainly another good question for Jason is, these values, this three point eight percent is now the grand list. The only way it's going to go down is if some of these items fall off of the list or there's some sort of legislation that makes the values change legally, but right now the value on the grand list is what stays on the grand list till the next revaluation. So, you know, it, it stays in until that one time and then you're absolutely correct. If the grant, if the market for different items goes down, then the values of those are going to stay there.
Right, so I, I just think it's, it's prudent, uh, loss to, to budget as if this didn't happen. I think that's the way we should look at this. And that's just my opinion. The, the second question I have is debt service, uh, four point seven million. Part of that impact is Birch Grove.
And Fire Councils, those are the two biggest pieces.
Okay, and I remember a term or two ago, this is my third term in the council, I remember we, we wanted to keep the, uh, debt service at about four point five. So is it just those items that are keeping it to, to four point seven? And do you see a scenario where we can get it back down to four point five and then maybe even lower than that?
Yes.
Okay.
But, um, in the debt management plans that I presented to the council, uh, to the council project process and all, I have discussed that for a certain amount of time. That number, because of the added projects that are on there, was going to increase. And I always show where that number's gonna go, um, based on our, our debt management plan. There is a point in time, and I don't have the exact year, where debt is going to start falling off the books and unless we come up with any other major things that we're hit with, the, there aren't major building renovations, things like that unless something else comes up. But everything that I have in the debt management plan now shows where that debt will fall off. And my recommendation for the last six or seven years to the managers who have worked here is that when we get to that point, that's where we start talking to, to town council as to how you want to manage that. If you want to start doing more pay as you go and entering into less debt, which is my recommendation, then we start factoring in funds set aside into a capital reserve so that when you're asking for, when they're asking for a new fire truck or a new dump truck or whatever, rather than going out to have to bond it, because we definitely don't, can't put something that large against one budget in one year. We, we start paying as we go by setting those funds aside for the future. It'll be up to the town council to decide how much of those savings they want to set aside and how much they might want to reverse what being that, the mill rate is.
Yeah, it's, you know, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable supporting a budget, uh, with the, the windfall that we got and, and the, the, the larger increases that we're seeing here. Uh, where we could, uh, we could go lower and make our, make our budget easier next year and then we could really impact the world this year, uh, immediately by, by lowering, going lower with the mill rate.
That's council's decision.
Very good, that's all, let me see.
Thank you, Jeff. How's it, you check? And then counselor.
Trying not to take too much time, even though I know a lot of questions, I know the departments are here and they have their presentations as well. But first I want to start thinking, everybody in the departments, especially Lisa, who are putting all the time. Just see if I look at the four hundred pages of budget books, how mu, how many departments who actually run underneath what your main title is, so I just want to thank you for that first.
Great stuff, too.
We do, and, um, I just wish that everybody would listen to the full budget in the departments, uh, before we start talking about wanting to reduce things. Back at the beginning, we said, it, a lot of numbers, I didn't know, and I follow things seem like they're changing. So they're not, are they, are reflective of town managers recommending budget? So your numbers, there's a lot of scenarios. Is there actually, I, I get concerned a little bit with that too, these numbers keep fluctuating.
Which, um, in specific, do you have any?
I think at the beginning, there's all these different, if the governor does this, if he doesn't do this. So I just wonder what I think you might have mentioned earlier, the different scenarios that we would have.
The, the only scenarios that I talked about, um, with the mill grade had to do with the motor vehicle, motor vehicle tax cap. And, you know, with the hopes of them, I guess they're not going to be bonded while it's in there before our budget is adopted. So unfortunately, at that point, once it's adopted, and I can only urge our legislators to, um, make it for the following year so that we can plan accordingly. If, if they're going to mandate this or either make us hold one hundred percent because they have not, the proposed reimbursement is not one hundred percent for the tax cap. So either if they make us hold one hundred percent, we'll be in, we'll be in good shape with whatever you do because it would be offset by a revenue that's going to substantiate shortfall.
I have a couple more questions, I know Lou has got his hand up over there, taking notes while talking. Thank you, Tammy. I'm gonna ask one about the crumbling foundations, when is that coming back online? So there's twenty-one homes coming back, uh, online, so receiving assessment reduction due to common foundations. Do we know how many are left on that list, is there?
We do, but I don't have the list with me. Um, it is gonna be part of your next agenda package next week.
I keep talking about crumbling foundations now. Um, I think I have one more, skip a couple of these that I had. I was really bored of that question, just noticed some numbers are a little different. Yeah, I'll ask him on Monday. So I'll let Lou go, if I come back to that question, I'll just follow up, just make a quick movement along.
Thank you, you check counselor. If you're speaking, you're still on mute. Well, he maybe has stepped away.
Whoa, you sleeping?
I don't know if he's having trouble with thinking it up.
Messages.
I have mine on a bike already.
Give it one more moment for this, Lou. Well, then I think we should move to the Human Services Department presentation and have questions. At that point, and Lou does the back online and bounce back to any of your questions that you may have.
Do you want me to lower his hand or leave it up?
It did work for the time being, you're right, let me raise it. I'll just, I'm just saying, hey.
Okay, so. Okay, this evening we have Beverly Bellamy, Maureen Glenigan, and that lady over there, Kim. Kim Kowash, Kim is the Director of the Senior Center, Maureen is the Assistant Human Services Director and Beverly is the Human Services Director. And we are here to discuss their budget. I'm just going to go over a quick overview and they will be available for your questions, um, or anything that you'd love to know about their operation. The overall, we're starting with the Human Services Department and that would be under Beverly's office. Budget increased by five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars over the previous year. Again, that, the impact of wages as we talked, spoke about earlier for not affiliated staff um, is part of that number. So unfortunately, this is the thing that makes life miserable when we're trying to look at, um, trends from one year to another. The program budget in itself decreased by two thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um, part of that was really a transfer of funds of five hundred and forty dollars to the senior center budget. It was taken out of this budget and moved to that budget for a cellphone, um, that was re, uh, was transferred to Kim rather than in, in the Human Services Office. The travel reimbursement line was reduced by hundred ninety-eight dollars and the visiting nurse, um, services were also reduced by one thousand four forty-seven. The reason for that is that visiting nurses have been providing health screening at no charge, so we didn't need to add the funds any longer since they're not charging us for the service. Okay, so here's just, uh, the overview of their budget. I always include this that just kind of shows which line items, um, went up, went down. But we try to hit on in, in the summary what the major things were. Not usually discuss it for something like, you know, ten, twenty hours, something like that. So what I'd like to do is, in this particular budget, if you'd like to open it up, if you have any questions for Beverly and her staff.
Thanks, counselor, you checked all accounts.
I'll be quick.
All the time you want, I encourage questions for budgets.
I've gone through so many pages and lose track of the notes, um. So I visited Kim back at the beginning and that she told Sammy and I were the only two counselors who would come to visit, which makes it a little sad because you guys do a lot in that department. And I know one of the first things she mentioned was you needed, I think it was part-time help because.
That's the next budget.
Oh, whose budget?
Human Services.
So, sorry.
She's next.
So, all right, so this is for Beverly. So are you seeing more residents apply for services needs? Especially in mental health, because on, on the mental health task force, Maureen, um, we talk a lot about it. So, um, do you see it in your own office that it's picking up?
We're seeing an increase for people coming in and learning services for field assistance, which we do, renters rebate, some of the entitlements and getting more calls about, um, other services or referral services that might be out there.
Okay.
For people, uh, several, I think in the last few months, more calls on elderly issues in the home, you know, whether spouses become sick and, you know, be a challenge. We've had people that are in nursing homes, looking to get discharged into the community, looking for the resources that are available. She, Pittney is still on, but, uh, she does a lot of that work with Medicare programs and choices. So I was just trying to coordinate services for people, type of like requests. I think since the change, people are getting that more, not their charge, especially with the field systems and good bank.
People that are using those services, if they need, um, that's, um, important, important. So speaking of mental health, health task force, like, I believe we don't really have, at least my experience so far, there hasn't been a lot of long-term planning. So one of the things we talk a lot is, you know, can I do some, I'm working on, up, up right now with mental health. But one of my concerns is that we need to really be looking ahead on that because I think you've mentioned too that we can do this temporary thing, we might have to be prepared to hire someone. So the town will actually need that person or we're really just waiting to see what, um, Hafn Valley or I think it was the village. So there, there, there's a couple of things because we're talking about.
Populations in town, you know, the youth population, that tackle that in a very particular way. You know, the kids, you know, what they've been through in the last couple of years and the, the, still the isolation. And I, I know that, I mean, people that work for the school system can speak more fully about this than I, than I can, so I hear anecdotally really. But I, we, we have some repair, I think, as a community. Every community in the country has a repair to do to the young people. And I, I think some of that is. And I, I think some of that is specialized work, which is what I'm sort of looking to the village maybe, or, or looking for ARPA funds through partnering with, with a community provider to maybe do some of that kind of case management work, like a, like a DCF social work without having to involve DCF. Do a little bit of handholding, making sure that people with mental health, behavioral health needs are linked to services that they need. But then there's a sort of broader need that I can see with the youth is, the youth need to be able to connect to each other again and have fun.
Right, absolutely.
And, and bond together. And I think as a community, we have a responsibility to, to do the best we can to make that happen. People in the rec department do a phenomenal job in offering those services. The child librarians doing an amazing job with, 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 you know, being fair. I think, I believe he came during COVID as well and, you know, just thought this, I'm, I'm doing what I can to, to augment those. I'm sort of trying to work to, to bring us all together so maybe, maybe a little less siloed than, than we have, than we have been over the last couple of years because of COVID. So that's, that's kind of what I'm looking at for the youth population. But then there's this other adult population and obviously they just have very different needs and some of that, and again, I'll partner with some community providers to, to maybe help educate our community on what is available, maybe break down some of the barriers, some of the self-imposed barriers of looking for help. Because, you know, those exist in a community like Tallinn. There, there are people that like to pretend that, you know, we don't have problems here. But of course we do have problems here, like every other, any town USA. But I, I, I believe that's a sort of different approach. I talked to this council about the grant that I went for, for, for the, sort of a mini grant for opioid misuse. And I do hope to reach out to some of those vulnerable people in our community and just sort of something fun, you know, off this wellness bag and let them know, hey, you know, there are people in town who care about you. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. No, it's helpful. I just get concerned, I mean, it's more of a discussion, I guess, for a different place, but I just get.
Oh, I think you would ask, I'm sorry.
Long-term. It doesn't really do with this budget, but it kind of does for future plans.
Yeah. So I think what, what I kind of imagine, and this is my hope, that let's, let's tackle the immediate need that now that we're hopefully coming out of this, this phase that we've all lived through, let's reconnect to joy and to, and to good mental health in our community. And then by partnering with some of our, and collaborating with some of our partner agencies, maybe by building those relationships, that's investment for the long term. Whether that, whether or not that means we work together to go for grants together or that becomes a, a, a question for this council a few years down the road, we'll see.
Now it's my turn to ask questions, but John, I don't know if you want to follow up on any, but we're on that task force together.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at the Lions here and HVACC. 55, 853 every year.
That's a general.
Oh, okay. And that's subsidized with a matching, almost matching, or 29,000. Okay. All right, perfect. You're wondering why.
Yeah, I asked my questions right there, right in a row. So I'm all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, I'm going to have a lot of questions that you might want to, I want to know where we stand from an actual perspective. But Bev, in here on the large increase to program materials for 2021, we went, we, we added a, we went from $800 to $3,900 in program materials. I'm wondering where we are to 25.
I think that was a solid, that's the grant, part of it's a grant.
Oh, yeah.
And we used to break it down into the different other services and fees. I think I will just ask the budget wise that we put it, it doesn't show up here, the offset.
It doesn't show an offset, right?
It's.
The 3K is, is, okay, here it's the offset. And same thing dues and membership. Dues and membership went from $900 to almost, you know, almost $2,000 in the 2022 budget. Do you, we know what's driving that high increase in?
That's what funding amplified. So that's what, and then I put in $100 for the ADA coordinator that we talked about, joining that organization.
Okay, that's amplified. All right, that's okay. And then for the, the HVACC, can you give, I'm looking to see how we're balancing that 56,000 plus the grant money for community need. And are we seeing a greater need for the HVACC dialer rides that we?
I mean, I've talked to Daniel Rock, point off, and, and he, he does admit that Tallinn tends to have a lower usage.
Yeah.
And, and, and part of it is that people live in the community or used to obviously driving their cars or getting rides, so we can increase that. What we see is, and he tried to provide is that somebody wants to let size the transit district. They need to go to Glass and Berry, or they need to, to go to those services. So we're working closely with them on that.
So I think that from the, from the need perspective, we think that's good. I know I've seen stats that 96% of households in Tallinn have at least one, if not more cars. So that's probably why our usage is low, but we feel like the, the 56,000 meets the current.
At this point, and I, I've always asked him if, if for some reason you're feeling you're hurting a lot of clients or presidents away, let me know. And so far, I, I also think some people are a little bit impatient if they get back to the doctor's office and you live on the other side of town, but they can't come and pick you up from an hour after your visit. It's a frustrating thing to probably, I always have this, I'm saying.
The people who use it do not comply. Yeah, you absolutely love.
Yeah, because they go to the senior center.
Right, and they take them on places and they're starting to take them on Saturdays to shopping malls. So I'm going to kind of do a push and.
It's educating people to utilize it.
Right.
Trying to.
Yeah. So do you think we're not using it to its fullest capacity for the 56,000?
Oh, no, we are. But I think the reason my budget hasn't increased is because they haven't seen the, the jump, the jump in, it's pretty much kind of stayed stable.
Okay. And then on page 226, I'm wondering, when can we expect to see things like coffee house and summer theater and all those things? Be back in person, back in line to live, space to day, non-virtuoso.
So what's this space? I actually was speaking to, because, you know, I, I have gotten questions specifically, more specifically about the summer theater program. And that was just not something in my, I, I can still say I knew in my relatively new role that I could just step into and, and just carry on with it in the way my predecessor was able to do. And I do think that it, it, it needs, it's, it's just not, that summer theater program, it's, it's not sustainable to have one staff member from the town run it the way it's been run. It's just not a sustainable model, put it that way. So I do have, I haven't, I actually, just the other day, I had a conversation with a parent who was saying, look, you know, there's a bunch of us who'd like to see something if not for this year, then we're just a planning meeting for next year. And I said, I'm more than happy to sort of, let's, let's talk about that. Let's, let's, let's see where we can go with that and maybe do some, some limited programming for this year if that's possible. And then what that kind of activity could look like for next summer. So I, I'm more than. Yeah. I don't know about that. I don't know. I don't know.
The key person who ran it is no longer participating in that. So we're, you know, we're going to be.
So are we kind of then re-envisioning what we're going to be doing soon?
Yes, and we're reconnecting with people. And I mean, I think, you know, we're going to rec department, the library, I mean, you know, just trying to work together as a team and get out of the community. And you probably know that Nancy worked her hours and then she volunteered maybe 20 hours a week. And that's not something that, you know, we are looking at. We're just, you know, and I put some creative ideas.
I'm hoping we can kind of like have some fusion with the rec department because one of the things that I read about with some of the towns using for ARPA money was looking at providing like summer programming for kids for free, like funding that through the ARPA money to get, like you said, get the connection back, get people back together in person, face to face and, and doing all that. So if, if we're not going to resume doing the things that we've done in the past, then perhaps if we can really kind of sit down and revision.
And we talked to Bruce about that. And, and then also, you know, I don't know, still his part of the stress of, I'm trying to hire people for this thing. He's having difficulties. So it's a, it's a, just a different world out there, but we're trying to, we're looking at that future.
Okay. So I think if what I'm hearing is correct, and I haven't talked to Bruce yet, we're not going to see a lot for like this summer.
Not to say summer theater this summer. But Bruce, that's a lot of programs.
Yes. Okay. All right. All right, I've got three for you. I've got more for you. Anybody? That's it for Bev.
No more questions.
That's it? No, for you. For you, we're good. Off the hook. You know, these two, not so much yet.
Those are part of it personally.
Yeah, right? There's a bus. You've been thrown up.
Are there any questions about human services before we go to senior services? That counts, Ms.? Does it work?
What are the top services that you're providing that you're most proud of for the residents?
Services?
Yes.
I have to say I'm most proud of my staff, honestly. And I'm most proud of the way they, the rise to occasion for everything. And in our office, it seems every day is different because you get a different call. We get a different. These two ladies are outstanding. So I really am in the way that we were able to treat people with respect. There's no, what I call poverty shaming or guilt when you need services. I, I just, that makes it good. And work on, I'm just like, we're helping other people. So, yeah.
I wanted to respond. I'm a construction engineer and manager.
So can you meet the service needs with the budget that is being proposed?
I think in human services and with the addition of Maureen, I think we can currently, I think we have to look to the future for new services and look at that model a little differently. And that, and obviously we're not tied to the senior center, but I think that's a place that that population is expanding and, and people are wanting those services and that education. It's, it's a first time in 33 years that I've been resident at that sort of position. So I just need to, and I'm not, you know, and maybe next year we'll, we'll look at new services.
My next question.
One more question.
Yeah. Senior services. Senior services?
Yeah.
It's up to you. Do you want to go through them or do you want to ask questions on what you've already viewed the budget? Just to kind of go over the, the big hits.
Yeah, same thing. It was for me, I feel like I've read the presentation, I think we can just go in each section and the counselors ask questions, either reference to the presentation or the budget packet. So.
Fine with me.
Yeah.
I think you should go over it.
Come on, Kim, you know I'm a vicious thing. Okay. So in the senior services here, the only thing I had a question from a perspective, from a joint perspective, Lisa, is the admin that we're going to be adding for you, about 25 hours a week. And then the admin that you're looking at for rec, why can we not combine those and do one full-time person that allocates two hours a day to rec and the rest to the senior center rather than hiring two headcount? That would be one full-time person rather than two part-time people.
Oh, you're saying a full-time?
Well, if you took her 25 hours and you added Bruce's 10 to 15 hours.
This is 24.
According to the budget, the $7,718.
Starting margin in the last quarter of the year.
Okay. All right, that might make sense. So his is a 20-hour position too.
24 hours.
So.
An hour less than that.
Okay. That was just a highlight of it. But the $4,000, I said this every year in every budget, it's ridiculous. $4,000 for programming is ridiculous.
It is.
So I'd like to know what, what you think, having been in the position now for over a year, what services can you offer or what would you like to see offered as more programming for the seniors that is not, you know, for 25% of our population, $4,000?
Well, so, so there's lots of programs that we could, there's lots of programs that we could offer. I have to be very creative and I have to find people that volunteer because we can't afford to pay anybody. There are programs, exercise is a huge program. We have the best exercise person and she does it for free twice, twice a week. If I paid her even a little, like if I paid her $25 a week, twice a week, that'd be my whole budget. So people have to do it for free. But there, there's Tai Chi, there's, there's all sorts of programs that you can ask people to come in. Anyway, I mean, there's educational programs, all sorts of programs. The sky's the limit when you pay people. When you don't pay people, you do what you can do.
Maybe to tie in just while, while Tammy stepped away for a moment, you also collaborate with, say, the rec department and library for senior programming, but there's other options and other facilities that are used outside of just the senior centers, building a kind of hub, but there's an effort.
Right. And I, and I, in my newsletter, I, I put Irish programs in, the ones that, the ones that don't compete with me. You can send me some, they compete with me. Those are out. But the ones that don't compete with me, oh, that would have been, all right. The same with rec. And we're doing pickleball and we're working together to do pickleball.
Somebody else has planned a pickleball thing.
I really don't get it, but. But yeah, so, so we are, I mean, that's, we kind of, you know, and we, and we do a lot of programming, but it's all free.
Yeah, Tammy, I just jumped in and just said, you know, the senior center is obviously the, the central hub, but I was thinking that there's a network that, you know, there's library, there's recreation and other programs that have, their budgets target seniors as well. So there's other areas of the budgeted dollarage for programming, but at least from this spreadsheet, it's just saying, well, we only put 4,000 away into the center.
Right.
But still, no, I, I do agree, it should be more substantial or we should all focus on what we can do or at least have to make it towards senior programming.
So is there any programming, any new programming that you would like to add or anything that you would look to change since hopefully you guys are driven back up now to free COVID programming and stuff like that?
Right. So there are, there are, I'm saying Tai Chi, people, somebody's interested in Tai, there's a few people interested in Tai Chi. I'd like to do something, a nutritional program if I could. The educational programs, there's, there, there are a number of programs, but you don't have to focus too much on what you can't afford.
Yeah.
So.
What you can do, right?
What you can do. And so that's kind of what.
Another reason to the assistance is because you can only do so much during the day and wanted to develop more programs that you're setting up in your.
So, so my difficult day is I answer about 35 regional calls because everybody has to call me and question. So you're trying to do something and then people start coming in and they can't sign in, so you have to go help them sign in and then, you know, and then, Kim, can I talk to you first? And, and I love, but it's like, okay, I can't. So I get nothing done. I get nothing. So it gets, it gets a little harder. So to think about, to think about, I have to sit down, be able to have time to think about them. And I, although the seniors do bring lots of ideas to me to do, you know, so.
Although the seniors do bring lots of ideas to me to do, you know, so.
And then my my last question for you is, um, from the perspective of the senior population, you've got the best grip on um, the issues and such that they're having. And we're looking at reviewing contract needs for HECC, for ARCA money, for mental health issues. Do you see a need for that with our senior populace? How can we reach them in? Do you think it's more pain than that out there in the public? Or should we be thinking about providing some sort of programming for mental health for the seniors?
I think, I mean, in every generation, you have people that have mental health issues. So so I'm sure there are some seniors. But for the most part, I think that getting them back out and having them interact with each other is very helpful. I think that a lot of them have been pressed. And in getting that, getting back. With people has definitely helped. I don't see a lot of issues with the seniors that are at senior sector. Not, but there are, not all of our seniors come to the senior sector. Some like this out on some, you know, but but the ones that I have, mostly it's. You know, depression, I think, just because because they've been closed in and are very happy to get out.
So you think just the interaction may solve some of that or most of that?
I think that it will solve a good portion of it, you know, at least from what I saw. So I think that's something that maybe you maybe should probably even more, uh, but when you're talking about more people that are homebound, I think it would be senior center.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. My next question is for people that you can't get in touch with, what kind of outreach are we doing to the ones who are not, I mean? Just like I said, sixty and over is about twenty five to ten about chocolate age, right?
That would be that they all work with her.
I love how they work.
Yeah, I've reached for her. That's, she's had a set of seniors out. She's in my question, so. She reaches out, she reaches out to them, she does house visits, um, you know, and sometimes, sometimes people will bring the the, like today, um. Was Mary Newman came for the first time I've been there. And it was just so nice to see her. It's just so, and she has been in the field. So my mind and the first time I got her, someone went to her house to give her the the presentation, but so, um, but. I don't, I don't have a lot of chance. There are some people who have come, who are away, they've been hurt, or they had surgery. I'll call and check in on that. But I don't have, um, I I don't know enough people and how to know who's shot in in that I've never met, you know, I don't, I don't know all, that's where Becky comes in, Jean helps too. And I think part of the purpose of this administrative assistant is kind of having a welcoming agent, so that somebody does that the senior is greeted, especially a new person, they get to go, pop on. You know, you're busy doing something and you can kind of show enough the world and plus helping to do all the other. And then and that's when you can kind of assess if something's going on with somebody. Have a little more time to one on one. The one on one, right? And I have to say that to have somebody sitting in that outside office, I cannot tell you how many times I'll be in my office and somebody will be up the hall, hello, hello, some, you know, because they have no idea because. Outside office is empty. So times would be to have some ingredient, say, hi, how you doing? You know, at least know somebody's there. That's that's a small, tiny part of it, but but it's a important part.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Any other questions for senior services?
Part of the easiest to read off of, um, I think I was saying before, I know you mentioned that you really needed somebody, so I'm glad it's in the budget. For you, like Tammy said, you know, seniors, the population is growing, so we need a lot more help. So just want to say I'm glad it's in there. I just happen to mention, actually, happy to notice, but it's part time admin assistant for you, right? But then, so it's fifty thousand five hundred ninety three. And the rec coordinator is eight thousand three hundred and seven, it seems.
The difference is because hers is starting July first and the rec coordinator is not starting till the third quarter, the fourth quarter actually of the year. Um, and that's starting it until April first. Yeah, April first for the recreation coordinator. Um, just with everything that was being built into this budget, I was trying to phase in certain positions. Um, and I felt that with COVID, I didn't know where programs were gonna start coming back in the recreational area. So I felt that. With recreation, starting that in April would start helping him get his programs together for the summer that was coming. So at least to get him someone to help.
Will that number go up?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
So. Where plan, I return a plan, but that's not, that's for.
You could figure it out.
This is important for starting in July.
Four times seven.
Okay, that just seemed like a really good deal that he.
No, no, that's just for one.
I just wanna say that when I started, there was a membership list and there was two hundred and ninety four people on the membership list. And as of March third, we had four hundred and fifty two people on it.
That's awesome.
So we definitely, we did a great job. So so it just gets a little tougher, but.
Oh, yeah.
We're definitely growing in numbers. And and I've gotten a few people who have offered to volunteer, who never come to the senior center before. There's four, four people who have offered actually six. And now now are now starting to come because they came to volunteer and they got to know. So it definitely, we're definitely, we're definitely growing.
That's great. That's all I, that we had. Thank you so much for.
Can you check, can I?
So I asked the same question of Bev, but can you fulfill your program objectives with the proposed budget, the recommended budget difference?
Well, to do it for free, sure. Yeah, I think, you know, I mean. I am doing it because because I need people that volunteer to run my programs. So as long as I find people to volunteer, yes, I can. If I have to pay people, no, I cannot. Thank you.
I guess to piggyback off of that, but with the proposed addition, that would probably then meet or exceed like your anticipation of what you are relooking for for the summer.
Right. So if 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 we, right, right, for, and if we hire someone, I have, that gives me more time to to be a little more creative and find financial ways to.
Grant or.
Great, right. I don't have time for that right now. But if I did, that would just give me, then the four thousand dollars would be a start when I could add to it.
So you're saying that in theory, the grants administrator that we had added on to the last budget could coordinate with your assistants, possibly bringing more funds if there's any state or federal dollars that could then.
Absolutely.
Blowing further programs. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for senior services? And actually, Tammy has stepped away from it. What was the change in the list for membership for, that was an interesting fact.
Oh, we, when I first started, there was a membership list of two hundred and ninety four people and as of March third, we have a membership list of four hundred and fifty.
So it's a good expansion for outreach, but yeah. On the library, are there any questions you can ask members? If they're passing the chair and then go around in circles.
Yes, okay.
Um, so, uh, on page two twenty nine, I was looking at the. The um, training and development, it tends to be under a hundred dollars every year, but we're budgeting eight hundred dollars for it. And I wasn't sure what was driving that increase.
Is that?
The training, yeah, the training and.
Training and development.
A lot of that also was because of the staff limitations in the past few years. The library, unfortunately, was hit with a lot of retirements. COVID didn't help. So the funding that they would have used for the training and development, the hundred dollars that they had budgeted. Um, wasn't used in the past few years because of staff shortfalls. The staff couldn't go. Uh, either due to COVID, they couldn't attend certain uh, trainings that would have normally have taken place, as well as Barbara not even able to. To leave at some points because she didn't have enough staff to manage the libraries until we turned our. Full staff now.
Oh, you're saying we have actuals so far to support that?
I can get it for you. Well, even this year has been limited because she has been without staff for a good majority of this year. A full staff, I guess. I mean, she has had staff. So and COVID again, still restricted, but we're hoping things are gonna start going around. You're gonna see that in a lot of the training budgets that are out there.
Yeah, I would say that program materials, the trend doesn't support the spend on that one either. Um, and then I had one question that Lisa, I sent you an email on, um, and a resident had reached out to me and I didn't know if there was a way to, um. I guess, you know, as long as I'm sure, I never realized that the library does not open until ten o'clock. It's like never, it's because I never go to the library in the mornings, but um, would it be possible at all to do at least like a shift of one day to open earlier, not change the hours?
So having worked in three libraries for thirty one years, consistency is really important. Consistency in hours is really important. We are open fifty four hours a week. We open every morning at ten and we close a day Monday through Thursday, we close at five, Friday and Saturday. We have more hours than many libraries in our size. People who, I don't know with, why the reason they would wanna come in earlier than that, we're also trying to become. Less of a book warehouse and more of a community hub. So community hub means we want groups in, those groups come in at night. We want meetings as we have here now. We want people to come in and study. We've got kids coming in and studying. So if we shifted those hours, say we opened at nine, then we'd be closing at seven. And that's, I don't think that that's a useful period of time for people who want to come in and be in the library. We might have a person or two who wants to come in and check out a book at night. I've never had anybody come in and say, I wanna have a meeting, I wanna come to the night.
Well, yeah, I don't think the person that contacted me was looking for a group. They were just looking for, it was a senior who was saying, oh, it'd be good to be able to go earlier than ten o'clock. Um, so I didn't know, I I understand we do more hours than everybody else, and I'm not suggesting that we added hours, just that perhaps one day a week, we could shift it or something. So. You have earlier hours for the people who want to come in earlier?
You know, at eight, I'm in there at eight thirty. And and when I'm in my office, if somebody comes to the door and I see them and I'm not, you know, concentrating on the computer. I will go and say, what do you need? And if it's a book, if they want to browse for a book, I'm not really gonna, our computers aren't even up there. If they are desperate for a copy, I'll go make them a copy. I don't know.
And the interesting is.
There are not a lot of people who were coming knocking on the door before ten o'clock.
And the the other side of that as well, depending on how the hours are shifted and everything else, we have to look at the union contract because they're all union employees and depending on what you do. That may have to be negotiated with the union, depending on on what the contract says. So, you know, I mean, it it all depends on the demand. And and I agree with Barbara regarding consistency because of one day a person comes in. At nine or thinking it's gonna be nine all the time, well, you open it nine the other day, it's gonna start getting confusing, especially, you know, depending on on what you do. And it, I think it's the demand too. If it's just for one person. You know, a lot of times we can make accommodations to before they're aware of who it is and what they need. I just don't, you know, we would really have to see what the demand is out there before we start making major changes. If it's just for one person. There may be another way to service that person, just to accomplish what they need.
Okay.
That is an interesting question, I just think about it. Are there libraries that are open earlier on the weekends? Like if it was a one day thing, if it was a Saturday. Do you see any potential use that it'd be that it'd be more beneficial to have earlier mornings and shorter afternoons or for programming purposes? Is that kind of the same deal that you'd rather be open till five on a on a Saturday? For an afternoon program?
Saturdays are busy as day.
Yeah.
And that's when families come in. So. I don't know, you know, after kids come back from soccer, then they might come over to the library, you know? We always have a surge like right before closing.
Yeah.
It's inevitable.
Actually, I'll go around for, I have a couple of questions, but before I go, if anyone else has questions. Councilmember.
I was looking at the department proposed budget versus the manager's proposed budget. And there's a line item for furniture fixture where. Uh, you were requesting money, Lisa's not recommending it to come through to us.
We pushed it back.
I'm sorry?
We we pushed it back to this year. There was money to do it.
You purchased it this year?
Did purchase, yeah, so desks.
Okay, great. That's good to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and so the same question I I had for the senior service department, uh, do you feel like this, the recommended budget for us? Is sufficient for you to provide the programming that you want to be provided?
So I have been fully staffed for about a month now and it's just wonderful. I, you know, it's 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 just incredible. So. I'm unhappy, like Kim. So if you look at our budget for program materials, fifteen hundred is what we typically have. So. And that is all going to the children's and the teen department. So I do have the um, support of friend, of my friends group. And I do have the support of my foundation and they do programs and they support programs. But I do a lot of programs myself. And so that's, you know, great, great. It seems to work. And if there was something I really wanted to do, I could ask the friends or I could ask the foundation, you know, which is, and they almost always do. So I'm, I feel pretty good right now, fully staffed a month. Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Were I chiming in a couple, calling to you?
No, I'm tired. I'm good.
Okay, no. Then I was actually gonna pivot off of the foundation and library support, you know, I think you mentioned in the budget message online at least that you're looking to develop a strategic plan over the summer. And do you see, obviously, I know, looking at some other libraries that do kind of three to five year plans, what are you seeing as like your three to five year plan? It's gonna be like the biggest hurdle that you'll see. Kind of budgetary wise outside of this fiscal year.
Well, for me, it's been staffing, just being able to keep. Now, I've got a younger, a younger staff now, so I think that'll make it easier. But when I talk to other library directors, there's a lot of um, in and out of staff. Not necessarily retiring, but people who are just jumping to a different job, you know, closer to home, more benefits, better money. So that consistent staffing. From really good people, that's.
And so does that training and development light that kind of up a little bit? Does that then kind of reflect on retention on employees, like say you're circulate or if you're referencing adult services, I agree.
I I think it's really important for people to get out and network. We haven't been able to do that. And as Lisa said, even if we could have, because of COVID, you know, those restrictions. I I don't, I don't have enough people to send out to do that. I do now. Um, so. Three of us are gonna go to uh, the Connecticut Library Conference, which is great. Um, I'd like to send everybody, really. I'd like to send everybody. It's. It's such a boost to be able to talk to other people, you know, for me to talk to other directors, for clerks to talk to other clerks, to go to programs. It's. It's really incredible. So I'd like to, I'd like to do that.
And then for the kiosks, I know they've been in for a couple of years. Do you see that with those beings, are they being used as a greater rate of people? I mean, I know I see when I go.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, the kids' block, we have to talk to the circulation assistants and like meet them and show the books are taking out. But are you seeing a shift in how you utilize staff?
You know, it was, oh, oh, shit. You know, they were invaluable for COVID because we would direct people to them. And and now those people who, at first. And now, those people who at first didn't want to do it, now go. I mean, we just go, they know how to do it. But we say, we still want to talk to you, you know? We want that personal piece.
Yeah.
Sure, staff, if they're not helping them do something, you know, computers still, we have people who need computer help. Even if they have computers at home, they need help with, say, Ancestry, or they need to do an Excel spreadsheet. Finding books, and it's second nature to us, but, no, people need help finding books. Just those little things that can help people. I mean, I really want the library to be a warm, friendly place. I have staff now who say hello to everybody, who say goodbye, who are inviting and welcoming. That's what I want. That's what I want. And that's what we need because, you know, libraries are, have been thought of as the third place. There's work, there's your home, there's the library. So, that's what I'm hoping for.
Great. Thank you. That covers it for me for questions. There's no others we could, actually, I do want to make a quick point of note probably for Lisa. Is that Louis had an issue with audio, but he wanted to say in regards to revenue services, he just wanted to make a note because his name was raised for that section, that all his questions were answered, and just wanted to have an honorific, wanted to thank other counselors for raising his points. He reached out to me directly because he's been having struggles. Yeah, there's still one, but yeah, I think they're having issues with their audio or something. So, with that, moving on to recreation department. So, I know Bruce is very patient, so, but I'll open the floor to questions. There's Bruce. Smiling face. So, counselors, any questions?
For recreation?
Yeah. Counselor Muccio and then Counselor Murray.
Hey, Bruce, how you doing? You look a lot more comfortable then.
I'm doing well, thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you. Thanks, Barb. And in the book here, it talks about repairs for the rec center. And I know we just did a lot of work with the grant and all that, and we did the floors and a couple of other things and that. So, I'm just wondering, what else is in need of repair in the rec center that we're talking about, needed repairs?
You know, all the rooms really could use an upgrade, our program rooms. You know, the floors, especially the floor, we have a moisture problem, moisture problem in the foundation. So, if you go into the rooms that don't have a new floor, you'll see the same issue that we had in the gym, these pockets, if you will, of tile that are popping up, that become hazardous. You know, we'd like to see some of those chalkboards come down and I guess, get some cosmetic work in there, kind of to get us out of the feel of a school and more of a community center. You know, we still have to replace our water fountains, kind of get up to date with the ones that have the water bottle, water bottle, water bottle filler, I'm sorry. And then also, you know, the windows could be replaced as well. They're not the most energy efficient windows. But those are some of the things moving forward. You know, we're just trying to make it, get that more of a community center feel, not such a feeling of a school still.
Okay. There are $3,000 in there for professional services. Can you tell me what?
That's Celebrate Talent.
Oh, okay.
And then I fundraised the rest of it.
I did not know that. Did we go seven minutes before? I must have overlooked that, sorry. The increase to utilities, are we back to now the rec center funding 100% of the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
This is the last year of it, right? That gets you back to being home?
I think, I think last year was the last year. I don't think there's an increase there this year.
The rec center does pay still some of the utilities. This just assists. And the amount that we were providing was 44,000. We weren't increasing that number after we got to this point. As you'll see, in the previous years, we started at 18, went up to 36. Now, last year up to 44, and it stays there. And that's to assist, but there's still, whatever is, it costs beyond 44,000, his recreation programs have to charge you a subsidy for any excess.
Which is normal. That's fine. Now, Bruce, this, the increase, the head count that you're going to get there, do you anticipate being able to recover this in fees through programming eventually?
I'm sorry, for the extra staff member?
The new staff member, the new head count?
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely anticipate a revenue increase that would allow, you know, someone besides myself to program, you know, program anything throughout the year. Not saying that I wouldn't program anymore. I would definitely be, still be programming, but it would be an extra person to do some legwork, which, you know, anytime you bring in a new program, you're going to bring in new, more revenue. How much revenue, I really can't say. I would really hope that this person could focus more on like, you know, summer camp, where they can put their full energy into that program, but also new ideas that, you know, that maybe I'm not aware of, or that they just have the time to bring and put their attention towards.
Okay, and how do you, how are you feeling about summer programming this summer? Do you think we're going to have, and other numbers were down in the last couple of years, obviously. Do you think we're going to depend?
Yeah, you know, I've been pushing summer camp on social media already. I've actually opened it up earlier. Today, we have 72 registrations, and that's, I'm not saying that's just for one week, but it's throughout the summer. And we're only at mid-March, and the summer program brochure hasn't even come out yet. So, that's a good sign. I mean, we're going to have camp. I think the, I think we're at like 20 kids per week already. So, even if it's a small scale, we're going to have summer camp. But we've added a lot of programs to our summer offerings again. And we're going to offer two sessions of wiffle ball. In the past, we've only offered one. We've added another arts camp, which we've usually only added one. For that eighth, I call it eighth week. It's a tough week for us to program. It's the third, third week of August, the tough week because, in general, it's tough right now in recreation, or recreation departments around finding part-time staff. But even so, even more so when you get into the later month of August, you start losing all those college kids. So, it's tough to staff. So, we added a specialty camp for six hours. It's slime week. I know my girls love slime. The parents in my household, me and my wife hate slime, but it is popular. So, we're hoping that slime week will be a very popular program that we've added to bring in some extra revenue. But we have a full gamut of programming this summer, which I'm expecting a lot of it to go, be able to go, because of enrollment will be up.
I am so glad my youngest is 22. We missed the slime, like event. I'm so happy about that.
It's awful.
My niece loves it. It's horrifying. But anyway, I was wondering, you said something about the college students. Is there an availability to kind of work at the high school for a work program for juniors and seniors possibly to work at the rec programming?
Yeah, we had talked about that at my last advisory board meeting to reach out more to the high school. This past fall, winter, I had reached out to the high school in regards to officials, because we needed officials. That approach really didn't work too well, but, you know, maybe there's something that we're missing by reaching out to the high school in general. So, I will reach out to the high school, whether it's guidance or or some other department to see how we can work together to just let these kids know that there's offerings here right in town that, I mean, they're good paying jobs and you get to play games all day with kids. It's, I grew up in rec, so I love working summer camps, sports programs, you name it, programs, I was doing it. I just see it just being an enjoyable time for kids that are looking for work.
That's it for me, Bruce. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Muccio, counselor, Counselor Murray, hold by. Do you have questions?
Here.
So, Bruce, I was really excited to see that the manager's proposed budget includes an additional staff member. I understand from the narratives that you had requested for a July 1st start, and Lisa's recommending a start in April. How do you think that that delay will affect programming?
I don't think, I've been doing it for almost eight years here in Tallinn, so I don't think it'll affect it, have any negative effect. It's how I've operated for almost eight years. I can just see that when we do start, positive events will start happening, just being more programs to be offered and, you know, open my time to focus on community needs as well.
Well, thank you very much. I know when the rec brochure comes to our house, my kids are fighting over who gets to live over at first. So, for us, thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you.
I still look at it. I don't even have kids. I look at some of the adult and stuff. I'm like, that's cool.
I'm telling you, if you want the joint shakeup fitness, you better.
No, she killed me. She beat me.
Yeah, well, her class is starting to boom again, so I would say register early.
I will say this, there's one point, there's a point in time when as a woman, you look at something and you say, I'm going to go there, be embarrassed, come out feeling worse than I did when I went in, so I'm not going anymore. She is like amazing.
Yeah, she is.
I haven't had much. I guess I meet the first ones a month, and I've learned so much about what you do and how hard you work. And like I said to Kim, I'm excited that, you know, we're put in these positions. And I just think it's a great thing as we've covered through the last few years. I'm sorry, I don't really have any questions. I just want to let you know, I'm excited. I hope to get that position. And thank you, Mr. Parker, for everything you do.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Stephen will move on to law enforcement.
Okay, I know I saw Lori. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Kevin Eklund is our state resident state trooper.
See him on camera. He's unmuted, so.
Yeah, he's ready to go. Just before, before you speak, I just want to bring, that came after I had already submitted my budget. The state of Connecticut usually gives us an estimate of where the state trooper on the fiscal year, and we had not received it in time. So, we had to go with our best estimate. They did have some increases in their proposed cost for us, and it's about $20,000 short. I just want to bring that to your attention. I'm still trying to figure out if there's any other ways I can manage that, if we have a trick shot throughout the year, or if there's some sort of things that I could pay for this year, if there's any savings over time or whatever that we have, maybe there might be a way I could like save that and build it into the next budget. But I haven't figured out yet, and I just want to bring it to your attention, that it may have to be something added to the budget possibly, but I'm really trying to find alternatives.
You said 20,000, so?
About 20,000.
29, around there. Is that 20,000 the total, or is it?
20,000, 19,552 is the difference that we need based on the new proposals. They increased our cost for several different areas and if you want to know explicitly, you can get that forward.
So, that's in addition to the 9976 that's in there?
So, it's not in the budget. The only thing in the budget is what we had originally proposed.
So, the dollar amount, just to clarify, that is 28,599, it's 9,900?
Well, it's 9,976 is what's in the budget right now.
Yeah.
If the council decides to add the additional 20,000, I just said 20,000, then it'll be 29,000 increase. But like I said, I'm still trying to figure out if there's anything I can do to cover that and then have to deal with it in the coming year. Okay, okay, Kevin, sorry.
That's okay. All right, so are there any questions for Ken, for me, counselors?
I saw in the budget book that under program objectives and goals fiscal year 23 says that DUI enforcement is continuing through September 2022. What happens after September 2022 for DUI enforcement?
Well, Lisa can talk a little more about that too. That is a, that is a state grant, and we got a portion of the full amount of the state grant, and I think the full amount, Lisa may know that it's 30 something thousand, and we got a small portion of it. So, that small portion will be completed and done in September of 2022, and then we have to reapply for that state grant again.
Oh, so you expect that that will continue that?
Yeah, we will certainly apply for that grant again, and the town doesn't, you know, doesn't have to come up with any money. That's a fully reimbursed state grant for DUI enforcement. So, it's completely up to the Department of Transportation on whether they give us that grant or not. So, we'll reapply after September 2022.
And I noticed there were a number of programs and trainings included in the budget. How are those programs and trainings selected? Like how do you choose which programs you're going to do?
Are you talking, what specific training programs do you mean?
One of the ones that was mentioned was DARE.
Right, so I decided to select a DARE program to bring that back into town. Obviously, you know, with the changes in the marijuana laws, and what that'll do is we're going to send three of our people into DARE training, and again, it's at no expense to the town. And they'll go to training, they'll become DARE certified officers, troopers, and then they'll go into the school system and teach the drug awareness program.
And that program's been updated since like when I was a kid and went through DARE, right?
I would assume it probably has been, yeah. I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen the program myself, but it was in this town many years back. It kind of, you know, for some reason, you know, didn't continue, and the school was doing some of their own programs. But I felt it was important that we institute that program back into the schools to get to the kids, especially in the lower grades. I think we're looking at probably fifth grade, somewhere in that range.
Great. I noticed that part of the measurements that are included in our budget book include fines and citations, but I didn't see where the money that's collected from fines and citations goes.
That goes into the general fund and it's under the SLEM these grants.
Okay. All right. And without me looking, do you have a ballpark of how much that is every year? No, don't look. I'll go back. I'll find it. Don't worry. Don't worry. And so then, the big picture question is, based on the budget that's been presented to us, do you feel like you can fulfill the service needs of your department based on this budget?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Any questions, counselors? Move over to public works.
Thank you, Karen. Kevin, thank you, Lori, and I think.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.
All right.
There's Scott. Bye, Scott.
Second shift, sir.
Second shift, sir.
So, Counselor Meacham, you to check, and Counselor Murray to share. Recognize for questions.
What page does Kevin, who is Scott?
236? Thank you.
230, yes, parks and facilities.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
What are you doing?
Well, living the dream right now.
So, just a few, few questions, trying to work my paper, because it's easier. On page, first of all, thank you, UTRH, for all you guys do, especially during snow season, right?
Yes, it's been a tough one this year. It's been a tough one this year with all the icing events and things like that, not so much snow, but more application of salt, you know, and then we get a little more rain, some rain or, or snow on top of it and have to go out and resalt again to keep it from freezing.
Yeah, you guys do a great job, so, thank you. So, breaking jokes, I know it's getting late. So on page 239 of the book. He doesn't have the book, so Lisa, help you. Thunder street lights in traffic control. It's 239. There's a difference of 21.7%, do you know why it's?
Which one is that?
It's at the very bottom.
Under streets and roads, spreadsheet on the page 239 of the budget.
This is under street lights and traffic control?
Yeah.
It's under parks and facilities. Yes, it is. It's street lighting and control. Did, yes, it's under street lights and control, and I don't have that summary right here right now. There we go. Right here, the grand total 15,000. Is that what you're asking about?
Well, it says proposed manager budget. I mean, I'm sorry, it's, maybe I misunderstood. It says, department proposed budget, it says it's the same number, 54,000. But then it says minus 15,000.
From last year. Okay, so the, in the, the big, the big drivers there, road markers and materials went down $6,000. Equipment rental went down about 4,400. Utilities, that I talked about earlier in the trending, that went down about 4,900. So that, that's what makes up all of that.
Okay, so, sorry, I get that unshown credit.
You see that on the screen, Scott?
Yes, yep.
As you can see here, the reasons are up in here.
Okay.
For why it changed. That's the presentation. But it is in the, it was cut right from the book. It's, it's right from the books.
And this, I guess, is just, I didn't tell you off, Lisa, this is just a general question with fuel costs. But we locked into it, and I mentioned earlier that we locked into a rate, but now it's.
We locked into a fuel rate and it went up 10 cents a gallon higher than what we had budgeted.
So it's gonna, the number's gonna be?
10 cents higher, and you just gotta see where we end up with these accounts. During the year, if it's trending high, we have to figure out, do we reset the odds or what do we, you know?
Okay. So on page 258, streets and roads program. Objectives and goals, it has a council goal and a, excuse me, I, I'm sorry, I don't know what that actual
Okay.
Council goal is.
This was a fire council goal, so change, and that's just coming out. But there was a council goal last council.
Okay.
That wanted to increase the use of social media. But, you know, even, even part of your council goals to share, I think, included increased interaction with the public or something like that. So it's still a buzz.
I just wanted to make sure if I missed something. And I have a couple more. Answered my other questions, because most of them are on that page 239, the council goal, so. I think that's it. If I have any further questions, I'll reach out to you, Lisa, and C.C., John, and Steve on it.
Counselor Meacham, all by Counselor Murray.
My page here, hold on. Messed up. Okay.
Yeah, streets and roads.
Oh wait, no, I'm sorry, I know what I did now. Engineering. Okay, so I, I know we're adding the new head count, Scott, but I also see that we have an increase in overtime. And I'm wondering why we would be adding overtime if we're adding a new head count. I would assume that that would mean we would lower overtime.
No, that's the reason that's, there's an increase there is because the rate of pay for all of the maintainers is expected to go up in this next contract, and we just increased that line item based on, you know, two and a half to three percent increase.
Okay, so it's not an increase in usage, it's an increase in, but even though I would think with adding a new head count, we would see a net reduction in overtime by having more people there to do it. Is that an offset?
Well, no, what happens is, like, right now, I'm not sure if you were on the council at the time when Steve decided, Steve Wardener decided we're gonna eliminate our outside contractors for plowing. Yeah, we got rid of two rental drivers with their own trucks, Plowls and Sanders, which meant we had to backfill those, those positions. So since then, we've been pulling at least two, right now, we currently pull three people from parks and facilities, which means our supervisor, our mechanic, they're out on the road addressing the schools, they're addressing firehouses, of the board of ed buildings, municipal buildings, things like that. What this position will do, and again, to go back further, when we did the geothermal project, our current supervisor, Dennis, from Parks and Facilities, was tasked with being the project manager, if you will, clerk of the works for the geothermal project. From there, a position was created for a operations manager, which Paul Russell is currently in that position, which left the supervisor's position open, so Dennis slid up in there, and we never backfilled his position. I can't remember the last time we had a storm where we were fully staffed. And Paul is in a loader, Scott Howard, supervisor from the highway department's in a truck, and Dennis is in a truck. There's, there's nobody, just, if we had an accident and one of the supervisors had to go to the accident to meet with an officer, make sure everything was okay, their route is being ignored. This position is basically going to help us get back to where we should be. But we're still, I don't want to say down bodies, but we are still utilizing at least two or three people from the parks and facilities on regular street routes.
Okay. So my next question is, per the notes, and I believe I, I believe I knew this from the past, but we use the cemetery fund to pay for the seasonal help. And it looks like we spent about $15,000. The budget for this current year went up to 23,400, and then for the next budget, it's 25,000. So why an increase, and is this, why isn't it coming out of the cemetery fund?
What we do is we budget for five total. I believe three come from the cemetery, two come from our regular operating budget. But you have to remember that the minimum wage goes up significantly every year, and that includes, that's included in this, this year's budget. I believe they're up to, I forget, there's 15 or 16 dollars an hour now, and we have, like I say, we have five people.
All right, that makes sense. So other services and fees, the trend is about $20,000 a year, and for some reason, this year it's gone up to 45,000. I was wondering if you could tell us what's driving that, and Lisa, what are the actuals that we've seen?
Yeah, what we did was in every one of our details on, in the budget, whether it's the Hicks building, whether it's recreation, senior center, we carried a line item for generator maintenance. We also carried the line items for HVACs, and we consolidated all of those into one account so that it doesn't show up in each building.
So it's coming out of the other accounts and going into this one?
Correct, yeah.
So. Well, I'm just writing that down. Okay, and same thing with the building materials? The trend has been around 16,000, and now it's going up to 23,000?
Yes, well, just the, just the, the cost of building materials. I mean, probably three years ago, you could get a sheet of, a four by eight sheet of sheet rock for about $6, and now they're up to $16. Not that we do a lot of sheet rocking, that's just an example, but these, the facilities crew, they do a lot of work that saves us a significant amount of money. Just recently, they put in a couple of cabinets in a countertop in human services to act. Not only is a place for, you know, the residents to come in and fill out forms or whatever, but it also provides a little barrier in case you have somebody who's a little irate, you know, protects them, the, the staff in there a little bit from them walking right in. You know, we, we do things like that. We've done plenty of work at the training center within the Hicks building itself upstairs, you know, the, years ago, they built that diocese where everybody's, when, you know, things are normal and the council sits around the, the diocese there, they, they built that.
A big core. And hopefully you guys are gonna build a nice little board in the back so we can put artwork on the wall.
If you, if you only knew how many times I researched that and came up with different.
I remember, it's been two years, I know.
And I, I went over them all with Walt Willett, and that's where it ended. I, I put the ball in his court, and I said, Walt, tell me what you want to do, and then COVID hit, and it wasn't really a priority, but we'll do what, we'll do whatever is asked of us.
Okay, and then I have a question around the contingency. The contingency amount is, it's never more than $19,000 in the budget, but it's gone up significantly here. So I'm wondering what you're assuming is, is going into the contingency and maybe why you think it needs to go up?
Well, in the past, we had a boiler, and, and you gotta remember, all these buildings are aging. We had a boiler go down at the station 240, $10,000, one shot. That's not something that's budgeted for. I mean, if you look at the details, you'll see that on, in most of the buildings that we budget $2,000, $3,000 for repairs in those buildings. That, that'd be gone in a minute, and then we can't do any else, like when we get the complaints that locks aren't working, lights are out, toilets are, you know, plugged, and, and we have to utilize that money to, you know, you're calling contractors or address those situations. It's, it's also come into play this year because, as anybody who has been over at Birch Grove, the new Birch Grove School, has seen, the sidewalks over there have doubled. And we are using outside services to come in and assist us. We had, we had two people slated to go over there, but because we had one extra that we had to send to the highway department, we didn't have somebody in a truck over there. So we have somebody helping with the sidewalks with a skid steer and a rubber blade, and we're doing an awesome job, but those are some of the things that are unexpected that have to be covered, and that's, that's where they come out of.
Okay. The last, I think they don't go through engineering, right?
No, that's gonna be with the planning department.
Okay, so the last that I have here is in relation to the ma- maintenance for the jail. Is there money in this budget somewhere to handle the bath issues for the jail? Between the ramps and the porch that's rotted and the other work that needs to be done?
No. No, we looked at that, and if you, you know, Lisa, if you want to scroll back to the pictures of the buildings that we maintain, just real quick. Okay, right there. There's the, there's the jail. Now, anybody who would look at that would say, well, to replace those, that entire front porch, both, you know, upstairs is shot, you can't come out on it. They would say, well, that can't be that much. I can guarantee you, because of the historic value and all the work that has to be done, along with the fact that we're trying to make it ADA accessible, I can guarantee you that that's gonna hold a price tag of at least 50 to 60,000 dollars. The side entrance, that's probably another 10 or 15,000 dollars easily. And then determining on what you're gonna do with a ramp, and I've, I've gone over all these things with the building official. I'm guessing the, the total by the time we do that building over, you're, you're gonna be close to $100,000 easily, and that's not including having an architect come in and design it. Because when you get inside and you have all the old moldings, they have to be the remade, or once you open up those walls and find out that the water has gone in and it's caused more rot, and that's not something that we can, you know, my guys can do. It's, it's gotta be something that's somebody is gonna be responsible for, such as insurance, in case there was, you know, there's an issue, they, they come in and they fix it, and then we find there's a problem, we have to have some sign, some kind of fallback.
Now, last week, we had staff there with Kathy Bach, we had representatives from SHPO, the sort of preservation society. And we had the building inspector, as well as some public all together over there, and they kind of talked about some of the needs and looked at they're, they're in the process of trying to determine what is going to be the best way to attack the situation. And the goal is to try to apply for a grant, possibly to help with some of this. And it would be something along the lines of a major capital project, depending on where it goes. So that's why it's not this budget, but it is something that we're addressing and looking. And Kathy Bach has been much involved as well, because we wanted to make sure she had an input for the facility that she's.
So we're gonna be looking for a grant for this then? We're gonna be looking for a grant for this then?
We're gonna be trying to find a grant, yes.
Okay, because I know she did that work in the past, and then it didn't, it didn't really go.
The problem is, this is a municipal owned building. So the type of grants that they got for other grants that they've received, they were able to get through being a 501, whatever, for what they're doing. The type of grants that she'd get for that, she can't get for this. So we're trying to see what we could find through SHPO, through, you know, state historical preservation funds, things like that. And we're looking into that, but we really can't figure everything out until we get a firm idea where we think we're gonna be with the cost of it and what is going to have to be done.
As a side note off of budget, I would hope that we can try to have some of that figured out before the end of the year, because you're projecting to have money. because you're projecting to have money left at the end of the year here this year. So if there's a possibility of doing any of it with existing funds that we've already taken from taxpayers, then that might be a good use considering it's been a problem for a while now. And they can't use the, the porch area and that, and it's not ADA accessible, so, um, hopefully.
But one of, one of the things that came up to me was, um, Jim Payquinn, our billing official. He knew somebody who was, um, well versed in this. He, he's an architect. And Jim reached out to him and said, hey, you know, and the guy says, Jim said, could you take a look at it? He said, not a problem. I drive through Talent every day. He says, I'll come out, take a look. And once he saw it, he says, yeah, he says, uh, I, I really don't wanna get involved with something like that. So it, it's not easy to get people today to step up to the plate and say, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll tell you what you have to do. And it can't be an engineer, it's gotta be an architect. Um, you know, nothing against engineers, but that's not their forte. They can, they can tell you what you need for structure in this now, but you need an architect to draw up the plans in order for us to, uh, even start to get a price. Then we have to get a contractor to come in and say, okay, yeah, well, well, uh, you know, this is a ballpark, what we're gonna do. And then it gives us a starting point for the, uh, the grant application.
Okay, um, I think that's all I have for now.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, please.
Are you?
No, bye.
Hey Scott, um, I have a question about the, uh, the roads and the engineering firm that, that we use to, to do the paper condition, uh, index for the roads.
Yep.
It says the goal is to have a, um, PCI rating of seventy-five or higher. Where are we right, right now?
We have, I'm gonna say there's twenty to twenty-five percent of our roads that are sixty or below. I mean, if you go over on Bacos Road, that's, that's rated at about a forty-five. Um, you go up into the high ridge area, that's all crumbling up there. Those are some of the areas that are around the schedule for this year. Um. It's challenging because the winter, it, it, I, I've tried to explain to Lisa and I think she, she understands it now that the plan that's put together, the five-year plan is just that, it's a plan. If, if we had a perfect winter and we didn't have any damage, we could probably attack the roads that are on there. We do, you know, look at those roads and say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna grab at least two or three out of there, but we still have to take care of the ones that are really damaged because they're just gonna fall apart and they'll be absolutely worth nothing if, uh, if we don't address them in a certain amount of time.
Okay, and then also part of the statement says, uh, it will require another five-year bond package. That might be a question for you, Lisa?
Yep, that is in our capital improvement plan. Once, what we've done, we've done it twice, was to go out for a five million dollar bond, uh, and the average was a year repairing roads. Um, and that has been in our capital plan. So you will see, I think it's in year four or five of the capital plan, the recommendation that we go off for another five million dollar bond issue to address the roads.
Okay.
Or if we have something on hand to firm a million dollars a year in the budget.
How's the, how's the target?
We, what we do, um, is Scott's ability to get roads done is, is probably up to a million dollars a year. That's just what, you know, he can manage in a year. So what I've done to kind of extend the life of the bond that we had authorized is I'll take whatever town aid road funds we have, if there's any loss of funds left over, and I'll offset the million dollars a year by that amount. So we stretch out the bond, uh, the ability to bond later on. Um, and extends about forty-five years.
Okay, and that town aid road, that, that's, that can be expected every year, right? Something?
Well, it all depends on what the legislature does.
Okay. Typically though, we will get.
Typically, we've gotten it. One year, um, we, in, we've gotten most of money and one year they said midstream, we weren't gonna get it. And it was just the one year that was, the whole budget constraints up at the state and I think we didn't get it. I had to stop one of our projects, right? Wasn't that one of the ones I said you can't spend that money? There's a couple of years.
I guess it was in sixteen, seventeen on the budget.
Yeah, it was a while back. So there was some stuff that could not be accomplished with funds that we have been using.
Thank you. Are we pre-purchasing almost thirteen thousand dollars worth of salt?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Are we pre-purchasing almost thirteen thousand dollars worth of treated salts now for next year?
Where are you saying that?
Uh, page two fifty-five.
That's. Sorry, hold on Scott.
It's in the commentary.
Oh, it's in the commentary, okay. Oh, you, streetlights?
Twelve thousand seven hundred twenty dollars.
Oh, okay, um.
What hap- yeah, what happened was, as, as you know, sometimes at the end of the year, we have money left over. We, we, um, encumbered sixty thousand dollars in a purchase order for treated salt, which we, we couldn't take last year because our salt shed was full. We utilized that purchase order first thing this year in addition to what we had budgeted for salt.
But the budget for next year for salt is being reduced, is that right?
It's the, the, unfortunately, the price of salt went up significantly again. So, um, we kept, we kept the price, our, our budgeted amount pretty close to the same. Uh, because we had that sixty thousand dollars. Yeah, the, the, the sand and salt jumped up from fifty-two seventy-five to sixty-eight fifty-one. So we're at a hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty. Um, and when I talked to Lisa, I said, I'd rather not raise, I'd rather not increase the budget, um, based on, uh, based on the cost per ton of the, uh, of the salt. It would have gone up to two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. And I said, we've got the sixty thousand this year and all we can do is hope for, you know, a light winter where we'll have money left over to, to fill the shed. We still have enough salt in the shed to get us through, um, the balance of this winter and then, um, provided the budget is approved the way it is, we'll, we'll continue on. We have, uh, like I say, there's, there's salt in there now that, um, with what we've budgeted to purchase next year, unless we get hit with some, you know, terrible winter, we should be in good shape.
Winter's over.
Okay.
The editor says that the ice and snow removal account went down twelve thousand seven hundred twenty dollars due to utilizing remaining purchase order for sixty grand.
Right. Right, so, like I'm saying, the, it went down because we did not, um, I didn't budget for the full amount, um.
Fill up.
Yeah, to, to fill up because we had that sixty thousand dollars. If I had budgeted for the three thousand ton as we typically do at the full, um, rate, it would have gone up forty thousand or forty-five thousand dollars. We had sixty thousand dollars to help us with this year. And that's where the difference came in.
So we're gonna have to plan for?
Using, using everything that we get budgeted next year.
For the full costs?
If, depending. Of what's in the shed and all that. You always kind of look at, you know, each year trends differently depending on the storms. So even though the price went up in the following year, if, if we have a field, I mean, you never do, but.
Okay, so on page two forty-six, the perks and facilities department requested, um, more than twelve thousand dollars more for payroll than the town manager's budget recommends.
Yep.
What accounts for that differential?
I started the labor position on October first instead of July first. He asked to start on July first and I cut it back and started it based on October.
Okay, so how does that delay impact the services provided by Parks and Facilities?
It's some, in my opinion, it'd be beneficial to have somebody onboard earlier, but the, the crucial time is the winter time. So we have somebody in an additional plow truck. And by hiring somebody prior to, or not hiring, but starting the hiring process before October first, once we have a candidate chosen, we can give them an October first or close to its start date and we'll have them all set to go before the, uh, the snow starts to fly. Had they started in July first, they would have gotten a little more training on, on, you know, our mowing and field, uh, maintenance, things like that. But, um, we have a relatively good handle on that as long as the weather cooperates with us.
With us, um, on page two fifty-seven, the road materials and markers is down about eighteen thousand dollars. What's going on there?
See it's got?
It's eighteen thousand dollars down.
From the previous year.
Let me pull that up. Hang on a second here.
Be in the commentary.
I was gonna say, I think I said it in.
There we go. Isn't that part of your, um, ice and snow removal, uh, stuff for salt?
Well, it depends. We have a couple of different, uh, accounts that are road materials and markers.
Well, this is in streets and roads.
Yep, I'm in there.
Or your, I think part of that is the, uh, the salt that you reduce from your original.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, the, the salt is in there. We also have, uh, um, we reduced our, our signs by a couple thousand dollars. We also reduced the, um, uh, regulatory signs. We have ADA mandated street signs that, uh, were reduced by two. The rest of the signs were reduced by six thousand dollars. What we did was we started a pretty, uh, aggressive sign replacement program a few years ago and we're, uh, keeping on top of it now. We have inventory, so it's not like we're buying a lot of signs. And that was when we felt we could reduce some.
And I know, I think Colleen already asked about streetlights and traffic controls. Um, all three items are down there. But what, what accounts for the reduction in equipment rental and then road materials and markers?
This is under streetlights and traffic control. Okay, that went down by fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars. Forty-nine hundred was by removing line item for, uh, traffic light and siren repairs. The traffic lights are all DOT, um, traffic lights. We don't have any of those. And the only siren we have is up at the intersection of Old Post and Route, uh, um, one ninety-five. And that was addressed two years ago when, uh, the state was out there doing the work on that project. It's, um, they have some kind of an actuator on there when it hears a, hears a siren. It's, it will change the, uh, um, change the traffic lights. We don't really have a siren, um, per se. And then the equipment rental is, uh, was a reduction. It's, it's, it's kind of misleading because it's considered equipment rental, but it's basically our contractor who comes in and paints the, uh, the lines, whether they're the W O lines or the white guidelines on a road. And what we've been trying to do is, um, the new roads are, are painted, uh, as soon as we can. And then they're done again the following year so that they last, you know, a, a couple of years. So we're able to, uh, cut back on some of the line painting. And then again, it was, uh, six thousand dollars for the signs.
Okay, and, uh, looking at the Streets and Roads Program objectives and goals, the first goal says, in budget year, we will continue to review and improve our efficiencies and attempt to reduce cost with as little impact on services as possible. So first of all, thank you for doing that. Um, I think everyone appreciates that. My question or my follow-up question is, what impacts to services do you anticipate with this budget?
Well, you know that we are, um, we're looking to do the cleaning of our catch basins in-house now, once we get our, our new machine. That's significant savings right there. Um, it will, it will take two of our people, but last year or this past, uh, year, we rented a vac all, put two individuals on it. The guys did a great job. They had the machine for a little over a month. And I, I forget, I think they were, they did, uh, five hundred and fifty catch basins. When we worked off of the state bid, those guys were being paid by the hour. So you know, there was no real drive behind them. Um, they were cleaning, you know, maybe twenty catch basins a day, so a hundred a week at a hundred and fifty bucks an hour. We didn't, we didn't get them for very long for the money we had budgeted, along with the fact that it was very difficult to get them because their first obligation is to the state of Connecticut. And there was only two, uh, two contractors out there, one that was near us and the other one that's down in, uh, I believe he's in Sullington. But as far as improving our efficiencies, it's some other things that we have done. You know, now that we have the, uh, the nice new addition for the highway garage and it's heated, when we anticipate a storm coming in, we load all of the, uh, the trucks with the, uh, treated salt. Everything is backed in so that as soon as they come in, their trucks are warm. They fire them up, they hit the buttons, the garage doors open and they go. They're on the road typically within ten minutes of arrival, which is, you know, advantageous to, uh, the motor and public. Um, we're not sitting there because, you know, with any hydraulic, you have to let the, the vehicle warm up so that the hydraulic fluid is warm and it's, it's turning everything at the right rate, such as the spinners and the chains on the Sanders and what have you. But with them being in a heated bay, um, it's, it's taking that piece of the puzzle right away.
Thanks for giving us some examples. I appreciate that.
Sure.
And then, one, the, the big picture question is, can you meet the service needs with the budget then recommended to us?
Well, not, not trying to be a smart aleck, but if you could tell me that there's not gonna be any surprises that come up, such as, you know, I mean, uh, I understand it completely, but that grass mat that we put on the town green, that took six guys, two days to put up there because you had to put staples into that thing every foot. And they did it the way it was supposed to be done. It held up. It worked out great for the individuals who needed to walk on it. But those are the little things that show up that, um, that take us away from doing our other things. We went out to one up property and we, we assisted with putting in the driveway, uh, clearing the area. Um, we hauled away debris that they had cut down. We put in stone and gravel so that they had access to it. And then fortunately for us, they were able to get a, a, uh, another contractor to come in and, um, do the, uh, the parking area and finish the driveway. We went back and relocated the, the loam like they asked us to. We went back and relocated the, the loam like they asked us to, but we're, you know, we, we try to take care of both our internal and external customers and we work very well with the conservation commission. They go out and do their cleanups and they call us and say, we've got, uh, four locations we need you to send a truck out to to pick up, you know, the tires and debris that we've taken off the property and we, we try to be very accommodating. But it's, in those things, we kinda figure in, but it's when we get hit with, um, the big example is this past summer, July and August, everybody saw how much rain we had. We went through, I believe it's close to five thousand dollars worth of gravel on our unimproved roads, especially Johnson Road, along with the overtime because it would, they, it happened on Fridays and Saturdays and we're out there Saturday and Sunday making the roads safe. You know, we spent, I believe the figure is about twenty thousand dollars in overtime and like I say, another five thousand dollars in gravel that we were very hopeful we were gonna get back from FEMA and it didn't qualify. So now I'm sitting here saying, okay, we've wiped out all of that overtime. We're behind, we're, you know, um, in the red on that. So I'm trying to jockey things around, we're prepared to jockey things around so that we can still remain whole this year and I don't have to come back to Lisa or to the council and say, hey, we're, unfortunately, we're short. But as it stands right now, yes, I feel, I feel confident that we should be, uh, we should be in pretty good shape.
Thank you so much.
Good round. Are there any other questions, council members?
Steve, if I, if I can ask or, uh, just add one more thing. We never really discuss, um, outside of the, the time we had a resident come in and voice her concerns over the bric-a-brac at a cemetery. We never really discuss cemeteries. As you know, we have four cemeteries in town. Um, two of them are, one is much older than the other, but then we have two newer cemeteries. And what we have done is we have teamed up with, um, the town of South Windsor's I T department. They have come in and by using our, uh, maps, plot plans, whatever you wanna call it, they've used those, they've gone out to the cemeteries, they have done an overview of, um, Valley View. They've done South Cemetery, they're currently working in East Cemetery. And what this has done is it has put all of these cemetery plots on a map. Part of that is they are able to use a, uh, free site and I, uh, the name slips my, my mind right now. But what it does is if you're, if you're from out of town, you, and once this is all up and running, we're gonna make a presentation to you. Once, if you come into town and you go log onto our website and you go to cemeteries and you type in John Smith, there might be four or five of them, but it'll bring it up and it'll bring up information on it. It will also show you a picture of the, the headstone, the footstone, whatever is there. It's a great way for people to find their friends and relatives. Yet this is something that is much more advanced than a lot of cemeteries have. The town of South Windsor actually reached out to us last week and they're going to some type of an I T, um, symposium convention, whatever it is, next week. And they asked for our permission to showcase this, uh, this program that, uh, between them and our cemetery sexton, Paul Russell, and our, um, public works secretary, Anne Fury. They have worked very hard with, um, South Windsor to get this thing up and running. We had looked at other programs, uh, it was called SEM Systems or, and they just, they, they could do what we're doing, but they could not make it available to the public. And I think that's a huge, huge step. And again, once, once we get it all, um, up and running, we're gonna have them come in, we should, we'll do a presentation, show you guys exactly what has taken place. And, um, I think it's a big feather in our cap.
I think great, that'd be good to have on a future agenda. And then councilor, you have a question?
Tammy, Lisa, myself and the council, we're excited to get that back off in the sweepper. Going to sign up for the capital with the here, but also sounds like we'll save.
We already have the back all on order. Right Scott?
Yes, yes, the purchase order went in today. Once we get the purchase order signed back, they know that we're, we're ordering it.
That's it.
Great though too, you gotta save money now with the salary line, right? You are hired, right?
Hi, everything is breaking up. I'm having a hard time hearing.
I thought earlier you said, you mentioned the back off, but because we didn't have one, fifty thousand dollars in constant consulting fees, sorry.
They're gonna be looking for some savings in the budget if you're gonna be using the back all with our staff.
Yes, and eventually there will be, but right now, one of the, one of the big issues in, I'm working with our consulting engineer who handles our, uh, environmental issues, um, we have to pay to get rid of everything we clean out of a catch basin because they consider it hazardous. There's oil, there could be gas, there could be hydraulic fluids, there could be pieces of metal. So until we go through and clean all these ca, catch basins realistically twice, because once we clean them and we have the heavy rains, they're gonna flush out any of the debris that's in the pipes. So it might take a, a, you know, a cycle of two years before I say, okay, we have a good handle on it now. And we can reduce that line item. In the meantime, I'm working with, uh, C M G, which is our, like I say, our environmental engineer. On, uh, he had said he found a place where, once we started, um, cleaning our basins and what we would do is we would put it into a lined dumpster over at, uh, on Old Stafford Road and then have somebody come in and haul it there. He thought we could either get it taken there for pretty close to free or, uh, much lower costs, who were currently disposing it.
Great.
Any other questions before we move to item three of the agenda? A German, everyone's favorite count already at this point.
Oh, the, the only other thing, uh, let's see, which is, so, did anyone have any questions about that?
That's not on, that's one, is it? I've cut it.
It's like the second to last slide.
I'm not giving them.
That one I get, yes. I've been asking that every year for the last five years. When are they gonna get a hundred thousand dollars?
They got it.
They got it.
I cut it. You're not getting any more money. That's that.
All right, so then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you Scott.
All right, have a good night.
Go on here.
Is there a first?
Action to adjourn.
Made by councilman Lucio, is there a second by councilman Murray? Councilman Luba, if you wanna raise your hand, the raising hand icon, once you're able to unmute, I'll count that as a vote in the affirmative, so. But I'll start with the internal, so Tammy?
Yup.
Dawn?
Hi.
Colleen? And I'm an I. I don't know who's able to raise his hand for Zoom, so. We're just gonna say it's, 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 yeah, one abstention, so. We are adjourned at forty-three. Thank you everyone. It's you here, refreshed and.